May 22nd is now in session. Just a reminder, please make sure your cellphones are off. And if you need to have a conversation, please take it outside of the room. In conformance with the open meeting law, I am informing you that this meeting is being livestreamed. Just a reminder that if you're here to speak either in support or in opposition of the project, put your name and address on the record and tell us what your support or opposition is based on. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first order of business, the approval of the hearing minutes of April 10th, 2018, and April 24th of 2018. I need a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the first extensions, calling BOA 448-640 for Norfolk Terrace. Companion cases, BOA 448-637-5258, Norfolk Terrace. BOA 448-639-6, Norfolk Terrace. And BOA 448-638-207, Norfolk Terrace. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joseph Feaster from the law firm of McKenzie and Associates, 183 State Street, Boston 02109.
Can you tell us why you're here?
Well, I'm here to seek an extension. Back in, on, last year, this body gave an extension for this project from a, from his grant of variances back in June of 2015. As you know, that trying to get financing for these projects, also trying to get in since it's affordable project, trying to get on affordability funding by the state and the city, you're in queue. And there's a need for my, excuse me, for my client to have an extension until next June in order to be able to, that would be a year from your last grant of an extension in order to complete their financing and get into construction of this project.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Make a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 568-247, 1152 Bennington Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with a business address at 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, I'm covering today for my colleague, Attorney Richard Linds, whose project this is. This is a three-family development project in East Boston. It was approved by the board in June of 2016. The relief is scheduled to expire June 10th, 2018. Attorney Linds explained to me and details in his request letter to the board that his client has recently succeeded in securing financing, but they're simply concerned about the permit issuing before the expiration date on June 10th. I believe Attorney Linds requested a one-year extension in his letter to the board.
Make a motion for a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you.
And the last case for extension, calling BOA 430-682-71R, Grampian Way. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Kevin Kerr. I'm an attorney with an address at 587 East Broadway in South Boston. And this matter before the board involves a one-car garage at a residential property. Since the approval, original approval by the board...
When was that?
It was...
This expired on 2017.
And the initial approval was February 24, 2015. Since then...
So, so the permit has essentially expired because, did you come in for an extension in 2017 or not?
The petitioner did not. There were a couple of things going on that delayed the construction. First of all...
But, but the permit essentially, for all intents and purposes, has expired.
That's my understanding.
Okay. Okay, so this is, in essence, then, not an extension if it's expired. Okay? So, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for denial. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. Calling the next two case, calling the next case on G Card, calling BOA 819-529-48 to 62 Brookline Avenue. This is to build out a retail store, a new entryway level. Violation to Article 32, Section 4. This is in the G Card applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Peter Walsh, Citywide Contracting.
Is it proposed? Is it closed?
The proposed addition is a approximately 110 square feet retail space in order to access the lower-level retail. We're in the process of hiring an engineer and we'd like to defer decision to further time.
That's okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please. Please see July 31st at 11:30.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 820-987-175, Beacon Street. This is a renovation of seven units in a single-family home. Violation, Article 32, Section 4, G Card applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with a business address at 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, this is a G Card-only matter. I have in my possession, and I believe the board was copied on this, a letter from the Boston Water and Sewer Commission indicating G Card compliance of the project.
We do have a letter.
Christian?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Simonelli, Groundwater Trust. And we do have the approval letter from Water and Sewer.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the 9:30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Counselor, address, please.
Address, 1948 to 1950 Washington Street.
For the record, is that just that one?
Yes.
Okay. For the record, calling BOA 794-165, 1948 to 1950 Washington Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joseph Feaster from the law firm of McKenzie Associates, 183 State Street, Suite 6, Boston Madam Chair and members, I am before the board because this is a situation whereby we've been going through the Article 80 process and most recently, the Board of, excuse me, the BPDA wanted to extend the time, or did extend the time, as to when this matter would go before their board. We originally thought that they would have been going, my client would have gone before the Board of the BPDA sometime this month. They moved that to June 12th. In speaking both with the Representative Gary Webster and the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, they are in agreement, but we're looking at a date in all due deference to the schedule of this board, looking at to see if this matter can be deferred into June 26 because of financing considerations. This particular project is what I call in the gateway leading to Roxbury. This is in Lower Roxbury. It is across from where we've done, the city, state, and others have put considerable funds. The project, which is right on the projects, on the corner of Melney or Cass on Washington Street. This particular project is on Thornite Street. It's a residential complex that is being proposed here. So if the board in its wisdom would be able to give us the date of June 26, that would be much appreciated.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
In our infinite wisdom, we are going to give you the date of 6/26.
That was compelling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fortune, and members of the board.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Hearing number called the first case, calling BOA 812-967-3215, Washington Street. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family to a three-family with a third unit at the attic floor and extend living space to the basement for Unit 1. Construct a new rear deck in rear addition with roof deck. The violation is Article 55, Section 55-40. Off-street parking is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, additional lot area is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 55, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 55, Section 9, side yacht is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, rear yacht is insufficient. And Article 55, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stephen Pettipass of Aesthetic Images, 7 Stimson Street, Boston, Mass. We met extensively with the...
Tell us about the proposal.
Sorry. The proposal is to convert a two-unit building into a three-unit building, extending living space into basement and attic space.
To basement and attic? Okay. You have a number of violations, so tell us what's required and what you're proposing.
Sure. The majority of the violations are due to the non-conforming aspect of the property itself. What, we met extensively with the...
So tell us what's the zoning district?
Zoning district?
3F.
It's a 3F?
3F.
Okay.
Yeah, 3F, what else?
Okay, and tell us about the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Oh, it's substantial. It's over eight feet in the basement.
Eight feet plus? And what's the use of the space in the basement?
Currently, it's just used for storage.
And the proposed use?
Would be living space. Basically, a bedroom and a playroom.
A bedroom and what?
Playroom.
And playroom? And how many, and so, and where is the third unit?
The third unit is located in the attic.
Okay.
What used to be the attic.
And how many square feet is that proposed to be?
That's roughly a little more than 1,000 square feet.
And what's the floor-to-ceiling height in there?
It's, again, that's substantial. The ridge is over 13, 14 feet, and we're doing two dormers on each side, two almost full-length dormers. And that's where the height violation comes in.
That's right. And how about the off-street parking? What's required and what are you proposing?
Currently, there is only one off-street parking. We've actually been able to manipulate the site to get an additional, so that we currently are proposing two. We're still short one.
Two parking spaces? Mr. Bizani, how are the plans?
Plans are adequate.
How are the, how's the parking looking? Is any of it front yard?
No, no, it's not front.
Any questions from the board?
What's the square footage of the proposed attic?
It's around 1,000 square feet. If you let me look at the plan, I can actually give you an exact.
And how many bedrooms in the entire building?
Originally, it was a two-unit, two-bedroom building. We are proposing to do a four-bedroom unit in the first floor and basement and two three unit, two, three-bedroom units in the second floor and attic.
Mr. Bizani?
So, so wait a minute. So that's 10, 10 bedrooms?
In total. Three, three bedrooms and four, two three-bedrooms and one four-bedroom.
Is this all more occupied?
No, it is not. Originally, we were going to do another bedroom off the back, but after talking with the local community group and with the Jamaica Plain Zoning Committee, we actually took that away.
Okay, now...
Do you, one more question. Getting back to the parking.
Yes.
What is the actual length of the parking driveway from curb, from property line back?
Because of the angle of the property line...
Straight back.
Straight back. It would be 50 feet. Two 25-foot spots.
How much?
50 feet. Two 25-foot spots. I'm sorry. 20, two 20-foot spots would be 40 feet. I apologize.
Okay. Because what it does do, to answer the previous query from the Madam Chairperson, one of the car, how many cars are there now?
Currently, I'm showing two.
You're showing two, okay. But one of the cars really does pop out into the front.
That's correct. It does.
So the question comes about is, is it possible for you to push that back another five feet?
We have two problems. Actually, you know...
I think you could do it.
I think we could do it. I think you're right. It looks to me if by, we could squeeze it in.
If you do that, then the parking is clearly not any front yard. So, you'll do that.
Yes, we will agree to do that.
Mr. Bizani, are the utilities separated? Is it possible for that basement to turn into another unit, where you can do that?
Well, the issue is that the utilities are not separated from the basement unit that has been, where space is being extended from the first floor into the basement. But it can very easily be done. All they have to do is throw a door at that point, and that would then give a private entrance into that space. That concern would be done.
It's an unusual basement where the basement itself is actually up above the rear yard.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Alex Valdez, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Shannon Murphy from City Council, Madam O'Malley's office. The council would like to go on record in support of this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Counselor Sammy George goes on record in support.
Anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the zoning relief requested with the following proviso that the driveway would be extended approximately five to eight feet on the right side.
And with design review?
There's no real exterior.
There is two dormers being added. Are there two dormers being added?
Yes, there's two dormers at the, on the attic level that's being added.
Would be BPDA design.
Is there a need for a motion on utility?
No, because that should be picked up, that should be picked up when they go for building currently because ISD will take a look and say, put a door there.
So is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with those provisos.
Finally, the next case, calling BOA 787-215, 40 Crawford Street. This is a new deck off the second floor. The violation is Article 50, Section 29. The rear yacht is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the side yacht is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Clayton Farmer. I'm the owner, and it's my residence.
So tell, tell us what you're proposing to do?
I'm proposing to build a deck above my existing garage and connect it with a bridge across from the house. Reasoning...
What's the nearest cross street on Crawford?
Elm Hill Avenue. It's right at the corner, Crawford and Elm Hill.
Okay.
And the main reason I wish to do this is because my wife has lupus, and we live off the second floor. It's kind of difficult for her to go up and down the steps all the time, particularly if we want to have outdoor functions.
Hold on. Have you seen the BRA's recommendation? Can you please give this to him? Sorry. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Plans are adequate. It's pretty simple.
Because the BRA thinks it's an oversized deck, so I just wanted to know what the dimensions are on it?
No, I mean, basically, the deck is infilling a little notch that's there and connecting straight across the garage.
Yeah.
And what is the size of the deck proposed?
It is approximately 25 by 20.
So it actually...
It's, it's above...
It's 20 by 13.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's going to be above the garage. The structure is already there. It's, it's, it's not really a new structure.
I understand.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Chair, members of the board, Joshua McFadden, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support. We had an onsite abudders meeting, and since then, the applicant has garnered two letters of support from his direct abudders.
I also have some letters from my abudders.
We can put that in the record. Thank you. Is anybody else here to speak in support? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Santa Baum from Council, Kim James' office. We would like to go on the record in opposition to request for more community process.
Okay, thank you. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling BOA 787-764-7 Abbott'sford Road. This is the curb cut for two vehicles. Violation to Article 10, Section 1. No parking is permitted within a five-foot buffer parallel to the side lot line within the side yacht. Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking and loading. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and fellow board members. My name is Maverick Afonso. I am the owner of 7 Abbott'sford Street. I'm here before you today to ask for approval to reestablish a curb cut for my property. This curb cut was capped, I believe it was 1995. The previous owner suggested that they didn't really need parking, and parking was not that bad on that street, so they decided to cap it when the street was being, you know, redeveloped in the sidewalks as well.
Tell us about, is any of this parking in the front yard?
No.
And what's the width and depth of the, of the driveway?
The width is, well, so, at the beginning of the driveway, I believe it's about 20 feet, but it narrows down to about nine feet. It goes back, I propose it to go back about like 36 feet or so.
Okay.
It could go back further if needed.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
The drawings are adequate. There is adequate scape, space from the side of the house to the property lines. The narrowest shrink point is at the bay, and that is where it's reduced down to nine and a half feet.
So is that why the five-foot buffer is being, is being cited, probably?
That's right.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joshua McFadden, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support as well. We had an onsite abudders meeting, and since then, the applicant has got support in a petition from his direct abudders as well.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling BOA 802-862-29 Sagamore Street. Sagamore Street here? Okay. This is to confirm extending living space. Basement was finished in 2007. The violation is Article 9, Section 1. The proposed expansion to the basement is an extension from an existing non-conforming three-family in the two-family sub-district. Article 65, Section 9. The proposed expansion worsens the existing non-conforming excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Megasatiana Ariana. The address is 29 Sagamore Street.
So tell us what's being proposed?
I'm trying to confirm the extended, my basement has extended living space. The repairs were done before I bought the house. The process was not completed by the previous owner, and I'm here to complete it.
So tell us, give us specifics about that extension into the basement?
The basement was converted into a bedroom and bathroom area with a storage area, per the plans. It has an exit that leads directly to the outside, as well as the staircase that leads upstairs right to a door. The work has already been completed. I've done nothing else to it.
What's the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
I'd have to look it up, but...
The drawings show seven foot six.
Okay. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
The drawings are adequate. I mean, it's a simple extension for a single family.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We're here to speak in support of this bill.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeekren, City Council, Frank Baker's office. Would like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling BOA 784-939-41 Mount Everett Street. 41 Mount Everett? Okay. This is off-street parking for six residential vehicles. The violation is Article 9, Section 1. Extension of a existing non-conforming three-family in a two-family sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Kurt Fraser. The address to the property is 41 Mount Everett Street.
So tell us what's being proposed?
We are proposing a curb cut at 41 Mount Everett Street to allow for six parking spaces in the rear of the lot. This property is a, is a multi-family home.
How many units?
Approximately three units. Three units.
Three units? Okay. And how many bedrooms altogether?
Altogether, they are... Approximately, I believe there's six bedrooms altogether.
Okay, so it's two bedroom, two-bedroom units?
Two bedrooms. Sorry. Three bedrooms.
So three bedroom, so that's nine bedrooms altogether, okay? And this is six parking spaces in the rear. Mr. Bizani, how are the plans?
I'd like to consult with BPDA on this. The issue is that it's a long na, long lot. It's 38 feet wide at the front, but it narrows down to 22 feet in the rear. And a standard parking space is 20 feet deep. So when you plan, right, it's a question of maneuverability. I would refer to BPDA.
BP, oh, BTD.
BPDA, sorry.
Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen...
That's okay.
There's actually no parking in that section where it narrows.
Hold on, hold on.
Bob D'Amico, Boston Transportation Department. Looking at the plans, if cars are parked on a 45-degree angle, they can fit four spaces, but that's about as many as you're going to fit in this particular lot because of its shape. But the, all, all that's required is 29 feet in width if you park them on a 45-degree angle. And then that way, they can fit four spaces.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Any other comments? Is anybody here to speak in support of this project?
Members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of Flavio De Vega, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board. Joe McGeekren, City Councilor. Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to grant parking relief for four spaces and attach proviso that we will not sign the decision until you submit the drawing that shows four parking spaces at forty-five command.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set for that proviso.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA seven seven two six one six, Six Berry Street. This is a change of occupancy from a one to two-family in addition to the existing residence and improvements. The violation is Article eighty, Section eighty-E dash two. This is a small project review in the end. Article sixty-five, Section Nine. The front yard setback requirement is insufficient. Article sixty-five, Section Nine. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, Section Nine. The rear yard setback requirement is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
George Bregel, eighty-five Crabtree Road, Quincy.
Tell us what's being proposed?
I'm his grandson, Michael Bregel.
So put your name and address on the record, and please speak up so I can hear you.
My name is Michael Bregel. Eighty-five Crabtree Road, Quincy, Mass.
Okay, so tell us what's being proposed?
We're proposing to change the occupancy from a single family to a two-family.
Okay. And how is that, that change projected to occur?
Well, we're going to tear down the garage in the front to put three parking spaces, and we need an eighteen-foot filing. And we're also going to cut the top off and square up the building and add a second floor.
So adding a second floor, demolishing the garage to accommodate the access.
And then there's two small, a very small addition in the backside of the house. You could see it on the plans there, the foundation plan.
Which plan should I be looking at?
The foundation plan.
Okay. Okay, I see that. It's a six, ten-by-six, okay? And how many bedrooms?
It's going to be three bedrooms, a three bedrooms, I believe.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
The drawings are adequate. There were three bedrooms per unit.
Does this appear to be like a flag lock? Is that what it is?
It is landlocked.
Oh.
I...
So if I'm looking at this cover site plan...
Yeah.
How would somebody access the building by vehicle? Off of Lorenzo?
Yes. Right now...
And this is a Berry, a street address?
It's Six Berry Street. Right now, there's, you would access it from Berry Street. There's an eight-foot passageway between other two houses, and it's like almost always blocked. So we're just going to access it from Lorenzo Street. And like I said, we have a garage and a driveway already there.
I see. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We're here to go on record in support of this project.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Do we need BPDA, Jeff?
For the second floor addition.
So we'll approve it with BPDA Design Review.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling a next case, calling BOA seven nine zero seven two seven fifty-nine Lawnsdale Street. This is a full renovation to a three-family dwelling, which was damaged during fire. Violation to Article sixty-five, Section Nine. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, Section Nine. The building height is excessive. Adding dormers creates a new third, four-story. And Article sixty-five, Section Nine. The side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Fifty-nine Lawnsdale Street.
Katie.
James McCabe.
Okay. Tell us what you're proposing to do.
Well, it's an existing three-family and had a fire a year ago, March. And what we would like to do is extend the dormers that are existing for more head height for an A-frame, three-family home.
And how many bedrooms will be in that unit?
There's two bedrooms per floor, so there'll be a total of six.
Six bedrooms in that...
Dwelling, yes.
In that dwelling?
Yes.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Who's here to speak in support?
Patrick Fandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We're here to go on record in support of this project.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Joe McGeekren, City Councilor. Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Dustin Gardner, representing District Four. Council President Andrea Campbell's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Paul Sullivan. We have City Councilwoman Michael Flaherty. Councilwoman go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Please put your name and address on the record, and tell us why you're opposed.
My name is Brianda Thompson. The address is sixty-five Lawnsdale Street, which is right next door, which was my mother's property, which she just recently passed away. And I received this letter. And according to this letter, it's saying that a lot of stuff is excessive, and I'm not really, you know... Sure, I can bring the letter to you to show you if you like.
Yes, we have it.
Okay. So I'm not really sure. In other words, when they build what they're building, it's going to be like higher than our building next door and blocking off anything or whatever?
I suggest is that after we make a decision here, that you have a conversation with the applicants so that you are fully comfortable with what they're proposing. Okay?
Right now, though, is any decision is going to be made?
Yes, there will be a decision made.
For or against?
We don't know yet.
Okay.
We are here receiving testimony, and basically, you're basically saying that you're not sure exactly what's happening.
Right.
Okay?
And according to this, I guess this has been here before?
I don't think so.
No?
I don't remember seeing this case before.
Okay, because, well, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding everything.
Okay.
But according to this letter, it's...
Okay, hold on. Give me, hold on one minute. I think it might be worth you just having a ten-minute conversation with your abutter before we make a decision. In the meantime, we will go ahead with the next case. Okay?
Thank you.
Calling a next case is a companion case as well. BOA eight one four six nine six forty-eight West Tremlett Street. BOA eight one four six nine seven fifty West Tremlett Street. This is for forty-eight West Tremlett. This is erecting a new two-family dwelling on an existing vacant lot. Proposed three off-street parking. Violation to Article sixty-five, Section Nine. Insufficient lot size. Article sixty-five, Section Nine. Insufficient lot width. Article sixty-five, Section Nine. Insufficient lot frontage. And Article sixty-five, excessive FAR. This is for fifty West Tremlett. Directing a new two-family dwelling on existing vacant land. Proposed three off-street parking. The violation is Article sixty-five. Insufficient lot size. Article sixty-five, Section Nine. Insufficient lot width. Article sixty-five. Insufficient lot width, frontage. Article sixty-five, Section Nine. Insufficient side yard setback. And Article sixty-five, Section Nine. Excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Yep, my name is Patrick Dowd of Ten Gray Terrace, Burn Tree, O two one eight four.
Patrick is the owner, and I'm Ahmed Nur, Nur Construction and Permitting at Two Central Week Road. Good morning, Madam Chair and honorable members. We appeared here before, and this project was a...
What's that?
Ma'am?
When was this before us?
This was before you. I don't recall the date. About two months ago. We came back for an extension, and unfortunately, the permit that you've approved had expired. And you've asked the owner what...
I remember this, okay.
Thank you very much, yeah.
So this is a request to erect two, two-family dwellings?
Correct.
And tell us about the parking, because I don't understand who the BWS is? Because the applicant says, but BWS and curb cut took too long before approvals?
Yes, so I, unfortunately, the project architect is not here. Patrick tells me there is six parking spaces. Can you answer the question about the...
There's six parking spaces.
What they're basically doing is they're two units side by side.
Correct.
And they're splitting the driveway between the two, the two units. Three parking on one lot and three spaces on the other. They have, they'll have a common driveway share.
So has this been registered at the Registry of Deeds? This shared driveway?
Has it been registered at the Registry of Deeds?
I would suggest it hasn't, because what you also have to do is move the curb cut that, there's an existing curb cut now, right? You have to move that so it's centered on the two lots.
Now, I understand, but may I just remind you, you might already know this, but just for my own thing, that this has already gone through you...
Totally understand, but the fact of the matter is, if it's gone through us before already, I'm sure that this thing about a shared driveway, there's got to be protections for the eventual owners, should it change hands. And so we need to make sure that you've had, the applicant has had two years to get it registered and do whatever they need to do, and it hasn't happened. You know, so that, that, you know, makes us a little bit worried.
I understand. The, not to cut you off, I'm sorry. The project engineer who had an emergency today that was supposed to be here would have probably known Tom Rivera, and I'm almost certain that he told me everything was fine. The only thing, Boston Water and Sewer took a very long time, as well as curb cut, and that's why it expired. By the time they went to ten-ten Mesa Avenue to pull the permit, they've told them, unfortunately, this is a two thousand fifteen, and therefore, you'd have to go back. So we came in front of you just for an extension, and...
And it expired, so that's...
Yeah, and expired. That was the only reason.
Okay, so what plans?
But also, though, to be fair...
Yes, indeed.
The Boston Water and Sewer drawing that you presented with your documents shows, still shows the old curb cut in its former location. So at some point, you have to do a drawing that shows the curb cut moved, so it splits the two.
I could submit that. I believe that there is one that took almost six, eight months for them to approve, and I'm sure if they haven't submitted that, that we could resubmit that if need be.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board. Flavio De Vega, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has support from the abudders and the community. We'll go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
We're going to make a motion to approve with, with the driveway being moved and that the two, the driveway is registered as, as...
At the registry.
At the registry as a common driveway.
And with BRA Design Review?
Yes.
All those, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, but there's some work that you need to do.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Calling BOA six eight five nine two one. Eight to Ten Loring Place. This is to erect a new two-family residential building with garage parking on grade. Violation to Article sixty-nine, Section twenty-nine. Off-street parking is insufficient. Article sixty-nine, Section Eight. A two-family dwelling is forbidden. Article sixty-nine, Section Nine. The lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-nine, Section Nine. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-nine, Section Nine. The height is excessive. Article sixty-nine, Section Nine. Usable open space is insufficient. Article sixty-nine, Section Nine. The front yard is insufficient. And Article sixty-nine, Section Nine. The rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Daniel Toscano from Irving Toscano, Attorney at Law, located at fifteen Broad Street, Boston, Mass., O two one oh nine. I'm here representing the owner of Eight to Ten Loring Place. To my immediate left is Adler Bernadine, who's one of the owners of the property. To my right is James Christopher, representing RCA Architecture Firm, who conducted the drawings. Today, we're seeking your approval to erect a two-family dwelling on an empty lot in the High Park area. This lot is a one-F six thousand, and right now, the lot size is forty-two hundred square feet, so we have an insufficient lot size. We want to erect a two-family. I'll go over some of the, we've made some changes to the plans since the last one, so you see in your packet. So we addressed some of the violations based on numerous meetings with our abudders. So I'll go over the violations, and then we'll go over the floor plan, if that's okay with the board. So the off-street parking, although I believe it's still a violation, so under the new plan, the old plan, we had one parking spot per unit. We're required to have two parking spots per unit, so we pushed the home back about twenty-five feet, and we added tandem parking spots. So we are putting in four parking spots, two for each unit, which will be on the side of the residence. So although I believe we meet the requirement of having the two parking spots per unit, I believe the maneuverability is still maybe a violation of that, so we are seeking relief. The use regulations, this is, like I said, this is a one-F six thousand sub-district. We are proposing a two-family in a forty-two hundred square foot lot. As you can see in the back pages of the second to the last page of your packet, and to the last page of your packet, it shows some of your director abudders that have similar or smaller-sized lots that have two-family or three-family. And in the back page of your packet, everything outlined in yellow, the orange would represent Eight to Ten Loring Place, and the yellow is two or three-family residential dwellings in that particular area. So having a two-family is not out of character in this particular area. The lot, we went over the lot area insufficient. The floor area ratio, we did have a violation under the original plans, under the new plans. We are in compliance. We are at, the requirement is point five. We are at point five FAR ratio, so meeting with the abudders, we did make the unit and the home smaller, so we're in compliance with that violation. The height excessive, we were over about three feet on the original plans. We've taken the house down, so we are, it's a thirty-five-foot height, limit two and a half stories. We did take it down, so we are in compliance with the regulations of the height. The open usable space requires eighteen hundred square feet of open space per unit, which is a total of thirty-six hundred square feet. We are proposing over twenty-three hundred square feet of open space. Although we're not at that thirty-six hundred, we are providing significant open space for the two residential units. The front yard insufficient, the original plans had the proposed home that we were in violation. I still think we are in violation, but we did push the house back twenty-five feet, which is the requirement according to the zoning, however...
How does it compare to modal on that?
I apologize.
How does it compare? Is twenty-five feet, how does that compare to modal front yard?
To the front, how's it compared to the...
To the modal of the rest of the houses on the street?
Yeah, they pushed... I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Christopher.
Okay. In the meantime, continue.
So, so we are, I believe we're in violation, because the front of the home has a four-foot front bow patio for additional opening space, so I believe that patio would be a violation because the structure is coming out about twenty-one feet, but to the home is twenty-five feet. The rear yard insufficient is forty. We are, since we pushed the home back, we are only at thirteen feet to the back of the abutting property, which is owned by Mr. Adler and his partner.
Was this project before this board in the past?
This project was not the project that was before this board. It was Garfield Street, it's thirty-eight Garfield, which is directly behind this project. It was the same owner of the two properties. However, the owner that I represented sold the property to Mr. Bernadine and his partner. So we've already gone through Garfield proposal, which was to confirm it as a two-family residential dwelling, and now the new owners are going forward with the same plans that the prior owner had, so more in place.
What are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
I do have one. James, can the driveway be pushed back more? Because if you really do two cars, you end up with...
Certainly, there's absolutely space to extend the driveway towards the rear of the property. The trade-off, Mr. Bizani, was the open space.
And also, you're going to require two curb cuts, right?
Correct.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
I live in New Acre Road. It's about nine hundred feet from the property.
I'm sorry, what's your address?
Three New Acre Road, High Park.
Okay.
The property was a two-family house. They changed it from two to one-family, four-bedroom, and they plan to build a second house to compensate for the loss. I support it because I believe it will improve the value of property in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else to speak in support? Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have the representatives, our elected officials, speaking first?
Members of the Board. Brian Flynn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Want to go on record in opposition of this proposal at this time due to the size. I do also want to say that the attorney and the developers were excellent with working with the community on this project. They did go back, relook at it, and were able to eliminate some of the variances, which was great, but we still have to oppose it at this time. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board. Walter Abway, District Five. Councilor Tim McCarthy's office. For the same reasons as the Mayor's office, the density of the project, at this time, we can't support it.
Good morning, members of the board. I'm actually an abutter directly across the street-
What's your name and what's your address, please?
Kamani Perez. My address is eleven Loring Place in High Park. My house is directly across the street from the backyard of thirty-eight Garfield, which a eight-to-ten-loring place was a part of for the last seventeen years that I've lived in High Park. When the lady had passed away, the original one-family that was on thirty-eight Garfield Ave, she lived with her son. It was sold separately, and the gentleman had bought it from somebody, piece by piece. So the backyard is actually eight-to-ten-loring place. We actually just did construction on eleven Loring Place, which we abided by all of the rules. We did not have to go to the appeal board. We have ten thousand square feet. Our house would directly, all the kids' bedrooms would be blocked. The space that they're proposing to put this two-family with two garages is not a sufficient size at all. The garages would come right out to the front of our yard, the twenty-five feet to go in front of the yard, there's not enough area for that either.
Sorry, so yours is a single-family dwelling, and the address is again?
Eleven Loring.
Eleven Loring, okay. Thank you. Do, your name and address, and please give us new information.
Good morning, Chairman Madam and members of the board. My name is Javier Perez. I also live at eleven Loring Place. And just if we can go on record too, for the proposal, it says to erect a new family, they're proposing a two-family.
Yep.
It says new, a new-family residential building, which they're proposing a two-family, which I don't know how they get away by saying two-family, because in actuality, it's-
So what is your opposition based on? Because they've made it very clear in their presentation that this is-
Opposition, it's, it exceeds, it exceeds all the zoning, there's nine violations. It exceeds the back, because they are owners of the rear property, they are, they're trying to get away with, you know, probably going into the other, to the other person's property also, but which, which they are owners of it. It is definitely too big. The violations are clear. The setback is not, it doesn't, it's not uniform with the, with that street-
Thank you.
-on the private way, ma'am. I just hope this isn't going on any deaf ears, ma'am, and the, I just want to go on record too, that the designer is, of the designing company, is the inspector of inspectional services. He was a co-founder of that, and his son, which is presently here, he is his son. So I just hope there's no influence there, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Counselor, let me ask you a question. So you can have a seat. Tell us about the rebutters directly on both sides, because these, the couple that's here in opposition is across the street. So tell us about the rebutters around, the direct rebutters.
So the direct rebutters, as you heard from Mr. and Mrs. Perez, they are at eleven Loring Place, which is directly across the street. They have a single family, and they've been, expressed their opposition from the beginning, even when we were proposing Garfield, which we did our best to try to work with them, try to, so-
So please address my question.
But directly around has myself, along with Matt Echo, my law associate, went around the area, and we looked at some of the parcels, and there's a majority of the two-families-
But on the rebutters, what are the rebutters' opinions, direct rebutters on either side and in the rear?
There's one directly to our right, is a smaller, it's a two-family, it's a smaller lot, very, it's a very similar home directly behind us, which is eight Garfield, which was confirmed, thirty-eight Garfield, which is confirmed as a two-family. If you're looking at thirty-eight Garfield to the, to our left, there's also a two-family, which is smaller-sized lot. So our direct rebutters all have, as you can see from the second to last page of your packet, all are two-family or three-families with smaller-sized lots. We are forty-two-hundred square feet. The unit size is a nine-hundred, nine-hundred-and-seventy-five square feet unit size, storage in the basement, so adequate unit size for the, in that area. And it fits the character. I, Madam Chair, I don't know, Mr. Bernadine might want something to add, if that's okay?
Anything to add?
Hi, Madam Chair. We have spoken to the direct rebutters to our right. One of our rebutters is Mr. Sebastian, and he has no opposition, but he does not want to go on record because of the neighbor that just spoke. And to our left, our abutter, Mr. Ian, does not have opposition either. We have, we have been working with them very closely with the property that we're renovating at thirty-eight Garfield, and keeping them informed about this property as well, and there has not been any opposition.
Okay, so given all this information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion, I'm going to make a motion too.
Sit down, please.
What he's saying is not true.
I'm going to make a motion to approve BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Two opposes, I vote with the motion. And this is going to be with design review.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. Can we get the folks from Long Steel Street back up to the table, please?
Mr. Fortune, just put it quickly back.
Yeah, I'll put it back into the record. Calling BOA seven-nine-zero-seven-two-seven, fifty-nine Long Steel Street. Name and address for the record, please.
James McCabe, fifty-nine Long Steel Street.
Thank you. So, tell us, tell us, ma'am, you had a conversation-
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a level of comfort then with what's happening? You understand?
Yes, ma'am. She, both of them has explained to me, and showed me their plans, and I do feel more comfortable. It's just that when I received the letter, I wasn't understanding a lot of stuff, but she, both of them showed me their plans, and explained to me that it's not going to interfere with my property on the other side of them. So I feel comfortable.
Good.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with continued BPDA design review. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's a real joke.
Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
It's a real joke.
Good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA eight-two-one-zero-three-five, thirty-four Colgate Road. This is an existing vacant parcel to newly erect a new three-family dwelling. Violation is Article ten, section one, accessory maximum allowed exceeded twenty-five percent, limitation of parking areas. Article sixty-seven, section thirty-two, off-street parking and loading, maneuverability in design. Article sixty-seven, section thirty, screening and buffering, none is proposed. Article sixty-seven, section thirty-two, off-street parking, insufficient parking, two spaces, unit is required. Article sixty-seven, section eight, forbidden three-family in a two-F sub-district. Article sixty-seven, section nine, insufficient minimum lot size, five thousand square feet is required. Article sixty-seven, section nine, insufficient additional lot area unit, eleven thousand square foot total is required. Article sixty-seven, section nine, insufficient minimum lot width, fifty feet is required. Article sixty-seven, section nine, insufficient minimum lot width frontage, fifty feet is required. Article sixty-seven, section, section nine, excessive FAR, point-five is the max. Article sixty-seven, section nine, number of allowed stories exceeded two-and-a-half feet is the max. Article sixty-seven, section nine, maximum allowed height is exceeded, thirty-five feet is the max. Article sixty-seven, section nine, insufficient open space, seventeen-hundred-and-fifty a unit is required. And article sixty-seven, section nine, insufficient side yard setback, ten feet is required. Name and address for the record, please.
Joseph Vazella, thirty-eight forty-one Washington Street in Rosendale.
So please tell us what's being proposed.
I'm here on an application to build a three-family house on an existing vacant lot that my family has owned for sixty-two years.
Has this been before us in the past?
Completely different application, yes.
Different application, okay. So tell us, so tell us first what's your, what you're proposing.
Proposing a three-family house on this lot, which is consistent in size and shape with other lots in the neighborhood, part of a subdivision from nineteen-sixteen. The three-family we're proposing is similar in terms of size and appearance with the other three-family houses on Colgate Road. We did have a community meeting, it went well, we heard no opposition in that meeting.
Let's, let me turn it over to Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Calling the first case for ten-thirty, calling BOA eight-one-four-nine-seven-seven, seventy-two Washington Street. This is a gut renovation of an existing three-family dwelling, demolition of an existing three-bay garage, construct a new, a three-story addition to replace the garage. The new addition to have three garage spaces, extend living space to the basement for unit one, construct a roof deck. The violation is Article sixty-two, section twenty-five, roof structure restrictions, an open roof deck may be erected on the main roof of the building, provided the access is by a roof hatch or a bulkhead, no more than thirty inches in height above such deck. The violation, Article sixty-two, section eight, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-two, section eight, building height is excessive in feet. Article sixty-two, section eight, usable open space is insufficient. Article sixty-two, section eight, side yard is insufficient. Article sixty-two, section eight, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci, I'm an attorney with a business address of three-fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I'm joined by, to my right, the project architect Timothy Burke, and to Tim's right, Michael Davis, who is the petitioner. Madam Chair, members, this is an application to gut renovate an existing three-family dwelling. It's at seventy-two Washington Street, which is at the corner of Union Street. It's on the part of Washington Street in Charlestown, that dead ends just before Austin Street. The proposal here is to take the existing three-family, as I say, gut renovated, to the side of the existing building, facing both Washington Street, and it's a corner structure, facing Union Street is a three-car garage, a single-story, concrete block structure. That would be demolished. There would be, it was essentially a side addition here, not a rear addition, but a side addition to the existing building to increase living space on the footprint, essentially the footprint of the existing garage structure. The result-
And what is that footprint? What's the size of that footprint?
The footprint of the garage structure, Tim may know that.
Okay.
That's the, say, I don't know exactly-
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Moranci, while-
Okay, so the, the result is that the renovated, newly renovated building as extended, will continue to have three units. Unit one would be a basement and first-floor duplex, the basement has an eight-foot ceiling height, that would be a three-bedroom unit of two-thousand-and-sixty square feet. Unit two would be a nineteen-hundred-and-fifty square foot four-bedroom unit. Unit three would be a twenty-two-hundred-and-thirty-five square foot four-bedroom unit. The building would become fully sprinkled. The garage spaces will essentially be rebuilt. They will, between the basement and the first floor, there'll actually be a lift system. So the parking for the building will be increased from the existing three spaces to two spaces per unit. So there'll be a total of six spaces for the three units. In terms of the violation letter, there's a citation for roof structure restrictions. I do want to point out, with respect to the headhouse that is shown on the plans, that is an existing headhouse, that is remaining, that is not a new proposed headhouse.
And is there a proposed deck on the roof?
Yes, there will be a deck on the roof, and that's for the exclusive use of unit three, accessed by the headhouse. The floor area ratio resulting FAR here would be two-point-six versus a maximum of two for the district. This is a three-F two-thousand zoning district.
What is it now, Counselor?
It's currently one-point-seven, one-point-seven. The, there's a violation here for excessive building height. This is a three-story, thirty-five-foot district. The height of the existing building is thirty-five-and-a-half feet. So the existing building is half a foot out of compliance. The addition obviously is matching the existing, hence the citation for building height. There's a citation for insufficient usable open space, which I would posit is incorrect. No usable open space here is being removed. There is no yard area, this is in fact a garage structure, there's no deck, there's no usable open space above the garage, there's no change of occupancy. Therefore, there is no diminishment of any existing usable open space. In fact, all that's happening here is an increase in open space because of the roof deck. Finally, there's a side yard and a rear yard insufficiency cited. With respect to the side yard insufficiency, and I pointed out earlier that this is a corner lot. So the side lot line of a corner lot is effectively a front lot line for setback purposes. There are two buildings on the block in question on that side of Austin Street, which means that rather than what would normally be the applied side yard setback requirement, you have a modal front yard requirement on the Austin Street side. I can understand why it was cited, but I believe that the code exempts this building because of its situation from the, from the actual side yard setback requirements. And finally, there's a rear yard insufficiency, and this is once again an existing condition. The rear yard setback requirement here is ten feet, as you can see on the plans, on Tim's plans, on sheet A one-point-one, for approximately eighty percent of the width of the side addition in the rear, there's a nine-foot setback. And the reason why it can't simply just be made ten feet is because the, all the spaces required to be able to accommodate the three side-by-side vehicles. There is a small notch that is one-point-one-seven feet off the rear lot line, but again, eighty, eighty percent of the addition is substantially in conformance with the required rear yard setback.
What were the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Your drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Fortune.
I mean, I don't have a plan in front of me, but you're going up above the garage of the three-story, is, will there be penetration through the existing? Is it all going to be brought together, or is it separate?
The garages are kept separate. There is one door, there'll be a fire-rated door-
Are we talking about the existing garage?
The existing building, the existing building.
The existing building will not be connected to the garage directly. It'll go over, the new, the new part will go over the garages.
So there will be a punch-through once you're all done?
On the lower, on the lowest level.
It'll be one building?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Sorry, is anybody here to speak in support?
Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board, Christopher Breen from the mayor's office and neighborhood services, would like to speak in support. The applicant, we hosted a meeting for the applicant on, about a month ago, there were about five or six people there that also spoke in support. A few people have reached out recently, and the applicant has met with them, and he's pledged to continue to work with them. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan of the opposite of Councilor Michael Flaherty, Council to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Please put your name and address on the record.
My name is David Yashar, I live at forty-one Union Street, which I own with my wife Emma. I live diagonally across, I actually have, there were letters submitted this morning to the board from Nate Blanchett, I don't know if they made it to, I have copies.
Will you summarize what your opposition is based on?
Yes, I live diagonally across from this building, and we generally are in support of its overall development. Our main concern specifically to our house is that there is shadow impact to our house, and we don't feel that the developer, I know is working, we met with the developer, but has fully given us an understanding of how those shadows will now affect our front yard. Both Nate Blanchett and myself are particularly concerned that the building is massive and out of character for the neighborhood. If you look at the neighbor, the area around the house, you'll see that the typical frontage for a house in that area is twenty-four feet in length, pretty much all the surrounding houses. The longest building in the entire two blocks of Washington Street is about forty-five street, forty-five feet. This building would essentially now be sixty feet in length with one, with one door to look at it. It is out of character for the neighborhood and its footprint. We do have concern essentially as well with the stackers for the garage, and it isn't necessarily that the amount of cars there, it's that by putting the stackers in, essentially, the first floor looks like it will be greater in height than the typical first floors of any other dwelling on the street. So essentially, that also adds to the essence of this building being out of character for the neighborhood. It's not in character, you know, the, we've had discussions with the developer about maybe having some decorative windows, but as it stands right now, it would essentially be a monolithic building that does not form to the, form to the, to the community. And as I said, we have seen shadow impact studies, and essentially, as we understand, we will be losing about four to five months of sun at particular times of day on our front yard.
Thank you.
Not in all of the letters.
Yes, thank you, please. Counselor, can you please address the massing and stacking height of the garage?
So I'll, I'll just say, I'll turn this over to Tim to talk about his design. I mean, obviously, this would go through design review. I think Tim has actually done a good job in terms of sort of distinguishing between the existing building and the new addition, to give it less of an appearance of being one structure. But I'll let Tim talk about his design concept for this. With respect to the shadowing, I do have to say, and I've been advised by my client and Tim, that a shadow study was done, even though, as I say, this building is six inches above the allowable height for the district. So, but I do want to let Tim talk about his design-
Talk about how, how, how you're breaking the building up, so it appears less monolithic.
Yes, we are continuing the existing stone foundation, there's a granite foundation, it's quite nice. So we're bringing that along the band, and we talked with the neighbor about putting in some blind openings to give it some modulation. And then the siding would be continuous, we'd probably be using hardy plank, we'd work with the BPDA on the detailing of that. The, we have the room for the stackers because of the hill on Union Street, it drops down quite a bit, so we have some extra height, and that's why we took advantage of that. But the second floor is all one level above there, so it was a nice way to hide the mass of the cars, and we've used some small roofs and transom lights to help break up the facade.
And the window sill levels are consistent with adjoining buildings, so even though there may be a floor height difference, it will still read as a consistent-
Right, we're continuing the existing head heights and sill heights, yes.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to grant early request with BPDA design review.
Set.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And please keep in conversation with your abutter.
Yes, good.
Okay?
Calling the next case, calling BOA eight-two-zero-three-four-zero-two-thirty-three Beacon This is a change of arguments from eleven residential units in one room to twelve residential units. All existing conditions, no work to be done. The violation is Article thirteen, section one, usable open space is insufficient, and Article twenty-three, section one, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Drago, Drago and Toscano, with an address of fifteen Broad Street, representing Mr. Andy Constantine, and I also have, who's the owner of the property- And I also have, who's the owner of the property, an author, Chu, who's the architect on the property. Mr. Constantine purchased this building, and it was zoned as 11 residential units and a room. That particular zone where the word mentioned "room" is actually a unit in the building that was pre-existing. It's a 406-square-foot unit, and it's in the first-floor rare. I provided part of the building docket that just actually highlights where it mentions that unit.
It's not the unit itself, though.
Yep. So it's a 406-square-foot unit. It is occupied currently, so it's one bedroom, kitchen, living room in the building itself, and it's on the first floor. It has separate meters, separate utilities. Somewhere along the line, it was just never zoned properly. It was in the family, it was a family building since before the 20s, I believe, and Mr. Constantine bought it and wanted to legalize it properly. We're also planning on sprinkling the entire building now.
So this is shown as unit number two?
No, it's unit number four on the plans. It's a 406-square-foot unit.
Number four?
One of the concerns that we had when we did the plans preview, there was no definition as to which unit was being requested. And this building is unique in a negative sense in that it has 213 square-foot dwelling units. But if they are already there and have been there, then that was the issue. Our concern was that it was that unit that was being requested.
Correct. So all of those units that you mentioned, Mr. Bazani, that are 200 or 275 feet are pre-existing and already legalized. And we actually highlight unit number four, and we can even add a proviso that we are only legalizing unit number four as well.
That would be helpful for the board.
I'm sorry, what did you just say? You can?
We could, if the board would want to add a proviso, that we specifically are only legalizing unit number four. Every other unit is legalized already.
So the occupancy for this building is going back to 1955, and it's for how many units?
11 units and one room. And the one room is mentioned specifically as the first-floor rare is where that room is located, which is actually an apartment, a 406-square-foot unit that's existing. It has been rented.
Okay, and all egress requirements are being met?
They have.
Okay. What are the plans?
Plans are very good, and it's because they are very good that it raised the issue.
Any questions from the board? Anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, just saw Groh at the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on record in support. We did have in a butters meeting where a couple of butters came out, but there were no outstanding questions or concerns, and everyone was very happy that the building would be restored back to its historical purpose. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, Board Elliot Laffer, Neighborhood Association of Black Bay. We are not opposed to this change in designation, not change in use.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Second.
And this is limited to unit number four?
Which is limited to unit number four with square footage of 406 square feet.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
Thank you, Randy.
Calling next case, calling BOA 816-428-182W-7THREE. This is a full interior renovation of an existing three-family dwelling, and replace existing siding, roof, and rear deck. Construct a new exterior egress stairs. Violation is Article 27S-5, it's in the IPART applicability, and Article 68, Section 8, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Barry Costello, 182W-7.
John McGinn, 275 Old Colony, South Boston.
Anyone speak opposed?
Just an interior renovation with siding, no additional square footage.
What was the occupancy, and what is the occupancy going to be?
Three and three, no change in occupancy.
Three and how many bedrooms?
Two, two, one.
Two, two, one.
So, yes.
Okay. What are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
The board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. We did hold in a butters meeting on the project, and there were no objections raised. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next case, calling BOA 794-792-92GSTREET. This is a change of occupancy from a three-family to a four-family, an additional unit in basement, and construct a fourth-floor addition. This is a full renovation. Violation is Article 68, Section 27S-5, it's in the IPART applicability. Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restrictions. Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking and loading requirements, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the floor area ratio is excessive. And Article 68, Section 8, building height is excessive. And Article 68, Section 8, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Dan Toscano from Drago and Toscano Attorneys at Law located at 15 Broad Street, Suite 610 in Boston, Mass. 02109. I represent Al Cantal, who's on my far right, who's the owner of 92GSTREET located in South Boston. To my immediate right is Peter Vanco, who's the architect from Vanco Studios who conducted the plans. We're seeking your approval to change the legal occupancy of this residential property from a three-family to a four-family residential district.
Just quickly for clarification on this front cover, is this central building the s-
It's the smaller one, yes.
That's that one?
And then your second page, when you flip over, it's the one towards the right.
Okay. So please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So when we filed this, we did have some violations. So we have gutted up the building, so we are completely renovating the units and making them larger bedroom sizes. But the floor area ratio is excessive. The current zoning code is 2.0. We are currently in violation anywhere about 2.2. We're put the increase in the floor area ratio to 2.54. So we're going up a little bit because we're adding that one-story addition for that, for the property. The height of the zoning code is 40 feet. We are going to 42 feet, asking request for an additional two feet, which will be in line with number 90GSTREET and number 88GSTREET, if you can look on your front page and also on your, your second page. And then there's the aerial view on your third page, which will be the exact height of 90 and 88 at 42. It's going to be identical to what they have done. The side yard insufficient is three feet on each side. We are at the property, we, there is no, it's a pre-existing violation, and we're not-
So can you give us, please, the unit breakdown?
The unit breakdown, so we're going, we're actually decreasing the number of bedrooms. So there's going to be two one-bedrooms. The garden unit is going to be about a 1,200-square-foot one-bedroom, which will walk right out into the backyard. The unit number, the garden 11th, and unit number one will be over 1,000-square-foot one-bedroom. Unit three and unit four are going to be duplexes. Unit three is going to be a duplex, two-bedroom, two-bath, is it two-bath or two-and-a-half-bath? Unit three?
Two-and-a-half.
Two-and-a-half-bath, unit three, which is about 14, I believe it's 1,400 square feet on unit three.
Correct, that's 1,439.
1,439. And unit four is a duplex as well, is a two-bedroom, two-bath, and that's going to be around the same square footage.
And there's no roof decks proposed?
There are back decks.
Rear decks?
There are rear decks.
Just a rear deck on the roof, or?
No.
Rear decks only. There's a precedent for decks in this area. Many of the buildings there have decks in the rear. We are not asking for any roof decks of any sort.
And these rear decks are a second means of egress?
Indeed, they are.
Okay. What are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate, but I do have a question. Councillor, you mentioned that the garden unit is one-bedroom.
It's a one-bedroom.
The one, but I'm looking at a plan that shows two.
Is that the-
Do you have any plan?
Oh, he has it.
Yes, we have updated plans.
Oh, they're right here. I apologize.
Bring them up here.
Yes. So there've been some change, I apologize, some changes from the original plan, so the bedroom count went down.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support of this application. We have had two butters meetings on this project. The second one, there were butters there in support, and we've also received letters of support from butters. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Steve Moore from City Council at Flynn's office. We are opposed to this project. We have heard from the local neighborhood association they are against. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan on behalf of City Council, Michael Flaherty. Council like to go on record in opposition. The council has heard from the neighborhood group, and the council is not in favor of converting basement space into living space for separate units. Like to go record in opposition.
Thank you. Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for your time.
We're going to take a four-minute break and reconvene at 11:30. Anybody here requesting withdrawals or deferrals for 11:30? Please make sure you're lined up and ready to go. The Board of Appeal for Tuesday, May 22nd is back in session. Just a reminder, please make sure your cell phones are off, and if you need to have conversations, please take them outside of the room. We're having a hard time today hearing the testimony in front of us. Also, in conformance with the open meeting law, I'm informing you that this meeting is being livestreamed. Finally, we are here to gather information. We're here to gather new information. Every process that's occurred before is advisory to this board. So when you're chance, when you have a chance to speak either for or against the project, put your name and address on the record and tell us why you're in support or not. If somebody prior to you has already stated your concern, put your name and address on the record, just so that we can be sure we're getting new information that will help inform our decisions, okay? Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the rediscussions for 11:30, are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30?
Yes.
Address, ma'am?
Good morning.
Address, please.
173 Humboldt.
For the record, calling BOA 617-813-173-HUMBoldt-Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Elizabeth Keely, Chair of the Board.
You can sit down. You can sit down. Are you deferring?
Yes.
Okay.
And for what reason?
Additional time to work with ISD and the community.
Okay, and you read it into the record adequately, Mr. Fortune?
I did, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Could I ask a question? This would be the one, two, three, the fourth defer?
Yes.
Is there a reasonable probability that this can be resolved at the next defer?
We're hopeful. That's why we're continuing to pursue this, but right now, it's, it's not clear.
Okay, because we're not, we don't tend to give an unlimited number of deferrals, so perhaps you should consider this your last deferral and try and get it wrapped up, okay?
With that in mind, Madam Chair, could we continue it into September then and not during the summer so that-
Okay.
We accommodate people's schedules.
We can do Christmas if you like. We can do Christmas if you like.
Christmas?
Yeah. Maybe it might be a present.
So first of all, may I have a motion?
Motion for defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
September 25th.
Thank you very much.
Not Christmas. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Hearing none? I'll go to the first case for rediscussions, BOA 725-789-287 to 293 Mavrick Street. This is a raise the existing building, combine lots, and erect a mixed-use structure consisting of retail on the first floor, 37 units above floors, and parking for 30 vehicles. The violation is Article 53, Section 56, insufficient parking 2.0 unit is required. Article 53, Section 56.2, 56.5, point A, parking maneuverability and stackers tandem. Article 53, Section 8, MFR is forbidden. Article 53, Section 8, the retail is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, excessive FAR. Article 53, maximum allowed building height is exceeded, 35 feet is max. Article 53, insufficient lot per dwelling unit, 1,000 square feet unit is required. Article 53, Section 9, usable open space, 300 square feet per unit. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback, two-and-a-half feet is required. Article 53, Section 9, number of allowed stories has been exceeded, three stories max. Article 53, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback, 30 feet minimum required. And Article 53, Section 54, screening and buffering, none is proposed. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of MG2, the petitioner for this application, with me is Tim Loranger. He is the architect with Embark Studios- He is the architect with Embark Studios for this particular project. As the secretary indicated, this is a proposal to combine lots, create a new 12,000-square-foot lot, roughly 12,000-square-foot lot, and replace an existing industrial use which is located in the Jeffries Point section of East Boston. Our proposal is to erect a mixed-use building with retail located at the ground floor and 37 new units of residential housing. Because this project is both subject to IDP as well as Article 80, we went through a process with the BPDA as well. Five of these units will be designated as IDP out of the total of the 37 units that are proposed. This process had an extensive community outreach process which lasted more than a year. We held over 10 community meetings in the East Boston section, including meetings with both the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association and the Go Street Citizens Association. I provided letters to the board indicating both of those groups actually supported this project. A number of changes were made throughout the process as well in order to address a number of the concerns that were raised by the neighborhood. I do have a breakdown of the number of units and what the total number of -- this is a mix of one- and two-bedroom units. Average size on the one-bedrooms about 706 square feet, and the two-bedroom average size about 912 square feet. The total gross floor area for the building is about 37,000 square feet. Our garage space does include stackers, but we did propose a total of 30 spaces, which is consistent with the percentages that seem to be appropriate for that neighborhood. We did hear from people that were concerned both about the number of parking spaces as well as too many parking spaces. They feel that projects like this in this section of East Boston should be focusing on less parking, actually, and we did hear that from a number of residents. I've also supplied the board with letters from four of the director abutters to the rear of the property, all who are in favor of this project. This existing site has been in industrial use for probably the better part of 40 years. They are thrilled with the possibility that this will be redeveloped for residential use. We've worked out appropriate mitigation with each of those neighbors, including landscaping for each of their yards as well as some fencing that they're going to have an opportunity to select and have some input on. We did have a chance to present this to the BPDA board on Thursday. The BPDA board approved that under Article 80, and I'm happy to walk through the zoning relief that's necessary. The board deems that appropriate.
Tell us about the west elevation. Is there a reason you're presenting a solid wall?
So west, I'm assuming you mean the right side?
Eight.
So that would be the right-hand side of the building. So at the lower level, you're seeing the garage space, and then the upper level sets back to allow for openings and windows. There isn't -- you can look at some of the aerial photos, there's an existing parking lot located to the right of this property, which I don't have a crystal ball, but I would guess that that's likely to be a target for potential future development as well. The BPDA urban design team indicated that they wanted to see us create an appropriate separation if, in fact, that were to be developed in the future, and the design that you see here on the right side of the building has taken that into account.
And is this the reason for the retail space? Is there a base flood elevation issue here?
I believe this area has -- a portion of this area is in base flood elevation or below the base flood elevation. The retail actually was a comment that we did hear from the neighborhood. There are a number of developments in this section of Jeffries Point and that further section of Maverick Street. Most recently, the one that's now being presently occupied is 320 Maverick Street, which proposed all residential. They feel with the number of units that are being proposed in this area, we did hear from a number of residents that having a retail use, including the use concept that we're proposing, which is a sort of a casual restaurant café, was an acceptable use for this area. It would create activity along the streetscape rather than just having either a residential unit or just a garage space at that level.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Members of the Board, Jesus Garcia with the Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support for this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Minor Perez representing the Carpenters Union would like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set for that proviso.
Thank you very much.
Calling BOA 788-830, 719-8 to 719 East Fifth Street. This is to construct a third-floor addition with rear and roof deck on an existing two-family dwelling. The violation is Article 68, Section 27S-5. It's in the IPod applicability. Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restrictions. Article 68, Section 8, sideyard is insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Mike McNally, 803 East Broadway, South Boston, Mass.
Tim Johnson, Architect, 190 Old Colony Ave., South Boston. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, we are proposing a third-floor addition to an existing two-story row house, two-unit row house with garage. Currently, the first unit is located in the basement under the garage. We are proposing to bring that basement unit up to the second and new third floor with the second unit and reconfigure them as duplexes. Keep the existing garage. We are also just made an arrangement with the abutters that we're going to delete one of the roof decks, and that will have only one roof deck accessed by one bulkhead, 12-by-12, with no hard gas line to the roof deck.
And the roof deck would be accessible to both units?
No, Madam Chair, only to the front unit or Unit 1.
And what are the sizes of each unit?
The size of each unit, Unit 1, which we're relocating to the second and third floors is a duplex unit, is a two-bedroom, two-bath unit, two-and-a-half bath, about 1,200 square feet. Bless you. Unit 2, which again is going to be on the second and third floors, is a duplex unit, is a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath at 1,700 square feet. But in this proposal, we are not changing occupancy. We are keeping two dwelling units, and we're keeping the same amount of gross square footage because all we're doing is relocating the basement unit to the third floor.
And the garage, has that always been there, or that's a proposed?
Yes, Madam Chair, that is an existing garage.
Did you do the projects on A Street?
On?
On A Street?
Which?
Those two residential projects.
39A Street?
Pardon?
39A Street? Yes, I did 39A Street, ma'am. But that had the garage off of Silver Street.
Yes, I know that, yeah.
No, the garage door will remain as it is because there are two parking spaces on the street that one of the abutters would like to see preserved, and therefore, we're keeping the garage door where it is.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
The existing living area that is currently under the garage, what's going to be used for afterward?
We will -- we're going to fill it with structural fill. There could be a small utility basement area, but the majority of that basement will be demolished and filled with structural fill. And then we'll do a slab-on-grade for the garage.
Okay.
What are you getting from San Puros? Were you getting water? Is that why the shift?
It just makes for two better units. Right now, the lower-level unit candidly is -- it's an older building. The structure itself just needs to be renovated, and then creating one lower-level unit, two-bedroom, versus creating two nice units, it just -- yeah, for habitable space means it's just a much better layout. It's a much better living area for people in the city.
And it also didn't really have the required light, natural light, coming down there. So by bringing it up, it makes for a better unit.
Yeah, there are issues with some of the lower-level units in the city, and this brings it above ground, creating two vertical units rather than one horizontal lower-level and one horizontal on the second floor.
Okay. Let's see. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Chair, Members of the Board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we would like to go on record in support. As the proponents mentioned, they have agreed with the neighbors to eliminate one of the roof decks and make the other roof deck a 12-by-12 deck accessed by a hatch with no grills. And we would also just like to ask that they continue working with the neighbors on the issue of the garage. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak? Are you speaking in support? Please, your name and address on the record.
My name is Colette Her, I live at 117 N Street in South Boston. I have two issues. One is, we want to speak again about the current garage. It's been used as storage area up until this point, not really as a live garage, so we want to discuss further about the entrance and exits of cars going in and out of the attic. The second issue that I wanted to bring to your attention is that although Mr. McNally has confirmed when he purchased it that it was a two-family home, the assessing records with the City of Boston still indicate it's a one-family, and has always been a one-family. So I think before anything gets approved, that we should really have the assessing records updated.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I? You're in opposition? Please put your name and address. Oh, wait, one -- you can wait a minute, right? Oh, I'm so sorry. Go ahead. I didn't recognize you. Your name and address for the rec -- I mean, who are you representing?
Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. I'm here to speak in opposition to this project due to Article 68. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan on behalf of City Councilor Michael Flaherty. Council like to go on record in opposition. There was opposition prior to today's hearing, but the council more so would like to go on record in opposition also due to the Article 68 ramifications and the amount of effort that went into drafting Article 68, but would ultimately leave the decision up to the board.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else to speak in opposition? If anybody else needs to speak, please line up.
Me. Chelsea Blanchard. I live at 131 N Street. I think that there are very serious issues about the entering and exiting of this garage design, and I think that that would be better suited for a deferral rather than design review.
Thank you.
There are some very serious concerns about the neighbors on either side of that garage.
Thank you.
And I would also like to note that this applicant has gone to great lengths to work with the neighbors, so we really appreciate that.
Hi, I'm in Butter, Eleanor Angle, 120 N Street, the corner of the N and East Fifth. I'm speaking against it also, just registering my vote. There's still a lot to go, especially on that whole garage business. Just saying. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Can we also have a look at the garage so that it doesn't come off as that solid door?
Yes, Madam.
That's something more permeable, visible?
Yes, Madam Chair, and we'll work with the neighbors to make sure it's safe in terms of tactile strips on the sidewalk and also a stroke.
But even the visuals of it?
We'll work with the BPDA.
Human architects.
Is there a second?
BPDA.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with that proviso.
Calling a next case.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board.
Calling a next case, BOA 768-730, 844 to 846 East Third Street. This is to raise the existing structure, erect a new four-story building with seven residential units and 10 parking spaces, and garage at grade. The violation is Article 27S, Section 5. This is in the South Boston IPod applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, my name is George Morancey. I'm an attorney with the business address.
Mr. Morancey, hold on. Can I have the conversations taken outside of the room, please? We're just having a hard time hearing the applicant. Go ahead.
I'm George Morancey. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent the applicants and the property owners, Jody and Joanne Longo, who are in the back of the room. They are here today. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, board members are being provided with revised plans. This matter was deferred a few weeks ago. The result of that deferral has been a further redesign of the building. The plans in possession of the board now depict a five-unit, a five-unit building here at 844 East Third Street. This is an MFR multi-family residential zoning district. This was a zoning compliant project at seven units. It remains a zoning compliant project at five units.
And Mr. Morancey, are the parking spaces the same, staying the same?
Yes, there are 10 parking spaces, so two per unit. These are traditional full-size garage parking spaces. There would be two two-bedroom units. These would be 1,525 square feet. There would be three three-bedroom units ranging from 2,105 to the owner's unit. My clients do intend to stay at the property, to the owner's unit, which would be 3,098 square feet. That's the large top-floor unit. With respect to the zoning code, again, this is an MFR district under Article 68. There's no minimum lot size requirement. This lot is 7,294 square feet, which results in a density of one proposed unit per 1,459 square feet of lot area. The minimum lot width and frontage here is 20 feet. The lot in question has 57 feet of width and frontage. The maximum FAR in the district is two. The FAR being proposed is 1.77. The maximum building height is 40 feet, which is where the proposed building would be. It's also approximately the height of the existing building to the roof of the ridge line of the roof. The required front yard setback here is five feet. This building would have an eight-foot front setback. There are three-foot sideyard setbacks on each side which matches the setbacks required by the code. There's 200 square feet of usable open space per dwelling unit required by Article 68, resulting in a requirement of 1,000 square feet of open space. This project would have 3,256 square feet of open space. As I mentioned, it is entirely zoning compliant and is here for IPod compliance only.
I'm just reading the plans, looking at the plans. So there's six -- there's five or six units because?
Five units.
Okay. Basement shows six. How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Morancey, this stays the same footprint that you had in place under the seven-unit version?
Correct. The building is the same size. The units became larger as the number was reduced from seven to five. On the color sheet that I handed out of taking an aerial or taken from the web an aerial which shows the existing building and then superimposed the footprint of what -- approximate footprint of what the new building would be.
And the property line goes to?
To the backside of the pool. You can see, I actually took the property line of the building of the new building at 933 East Second Street, which was a 20-unit building approved some time ago by this board. And the dotted line on that red block indicates the area of that parcel. So 844 goes essentially to the beginning of that parcel in the rear.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Mr. Bazani, I forget if I asked you if the plans are adequate?
Drawings are adequate.
Any question? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Representatives of elected officials first?
Chair, Members of the Board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in opposition. We have held a few abutters meetings on this project, and even at five units, it is very large. There's a lot of opposition in the community. It's not really consistent with the rest of the buildings. Oh, I'm sorry. Is this better? It's not really consistent with the rest of the buildings on the block, which are primarily single and two families with possibly some three families. So for that reason, we're in opposition. Thank you.
Hello, Members of the Board. Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. I'm here to speak in opposition to this project due to direct abutters opposition.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan on behalf of City Councilor Michael Flaherty. Echoing the sentiments of the Mayor's Office, Council like to go on record in opposition and stand with the neighbors.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Councilor Savvy George would like to go on record in opposition.
Okay, hold on. All the abutters, can you line up? And this is just a reminder that if somebody has already stated your concern, just put your name and address on the record, because I think we'll get a sense pretty clearly what the issues are. So give us new information if you're speaking.
54 P Street. I live in a row of five single-family homes, fought for 40 years to keep them single families, built in 1863. This new development does not go with the neighborhood. What they're talking about on Second Street was a commercial building that's behind the Longos' house. Longo's house.
My name is Mary Bolger, and I've been a tenant at 820, owned the home at 820 East Third Street, brought all my children up there, and now I have two children that have houses on that block. And it's just, this just isn't in keeping with the character of the block. I have that big condos association, they aren't that condo building there. So I am for, against it.
She was up. We have a family triple-deck at 845 East Third Street, right across the street. We oppose this project.
Thank you.
Michael Gannon, 836 East Third Street. I'm the director Butter. I have a single family. His property will go 40 feet, three feet from my yard, from the property line, plus 70 feet long. Take away the sun, I can see the ocean when I come out my front door. This will all be gone. Thank you.
Hi, Patricia O'Keefe, 841 East Third Street, and I'm opposed to this project as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alvin Pump, 852 East Third Street, and again, I just overdeveloped and opposed to the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I do have some signatures I'd like to submit in support. This is a petition in support, and the addresses associated with the signatures are 831 East Third Street, 823 East Third Street, 829 East Third Street, 832 East Third Street, 860 East Third Street, and 925 East Second Street.
So that's how many separate buildings? Is that six separate buildings?
Yes.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please? May I have a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to oppose.
Denial?
Denial, yep.
Straight, is there a second?
No second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, it's been denied.
Thank you.
Calling an ex case, calling BOA 778-326, 8 Deedee's Lane. This is to erect a new four-story, single-family dwelling with garage, rear stair, front, and roof decks on a newly created lot. Violation is Article 29, Section 4. It's in the green belt protection overlay district. Article 27S, Section 5. It's in the South Boston iPod applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dan Tagrodińska, 37 Marine Road.
161 West 7.
Sorry, Tim Johnson, Architect, 190 Old Colony Ave., South Boston. Madam Chair, members of the board, there are eight through lots between Marine Road and Deedee's Lane with the crossroad of K Street on one side. Two of the eight lots have existing dwellings fronting on Deedee's Lane. And if you look at the contextual images I submitted to the board on Page 1 and 2, you'll see the proposed building with the context of the other buildings fronting on Deedee's Lane. My clients are proposing on another one of those through lots with an address of 37 Marine Road, an owner-occupied detached, single-family dwelling with garage, fronting Deedee's Lane. This is a--
The address, the formal address will be Deedee's Lane?
8 Deedee's Lane, Madam Chair.
And it's a through lot?
It's a through lot.
Okay.
This is a zoning compliant building. However, with two Butters' meetings, we conceded the fourth story, which was zoning compliant, and we reduced it down to a three-story, single-family dwelling. We went from four stories to three stories, five bedrooms, three and a half baths, to two bedrooms, two and a half baths.
Well, speak slow down. So it's still one family?
Yes.
It's from five bedrooms down to?
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms.
And we went from, and two, three and a half baths to two and a half baths, with a total square footage of living area 1720.
Seventeen twenty square feet?
Yes, ma'am.
And how is parking being accommodated?
We have a garage, and the plans will show two cars in the garage.
Okay. And what's triggering the G-Pod?
The G-Pod is that we are on the boulevard, which fronts Dorchester Bay.
Because you're on Marine. Okay.
And then the iPod, of course, is being from planning over.
So how much of this property is affected by the G-Pod?
I would say all, the entire property is affected by the G-Pod, ma'am.
Okay.
I don't have a G-Pod map, but I would say it is.
Okay.
So, we propose a zoning compliant, single-family dwelling. We took a story off the building to, hopefully the neighbors would be in support, and we still have a zoning compliant, owner-occupied, three-story, single-family dwelling.
Can you give us a minute to just scan through the plans? So I'm a, so this is, so this is not a through property, then? It's been subdivided, as I look at C01?
Yes, ma'am, we are proposing to subdivide it.
This thing two and a half story, and this is a proposed one-family?
That's right.
If this one was sitting on its, so this one is not cited as two buildings on the same lot, so it's respecting, these citations are respecting that subdivision?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair. And the building at 37, at the other end of the lot, is a single family, and that will also be owner-occupied by my client's family.
Now, the question becomes, with this subdivision, how much of 37 Marine Road gets pushed into any violations? What are the violations?
There are no violations for 37 Marine Road.
So it's--
So the green building?
Even with--
Except--
There'll be no yard violations, no lot area violations?
There are no, 37 Marine Road is zoning code compliant with the subdivision.
Okay, as is this one.
As is this one.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bezani?
Drawings are adequate. How does 37 Marine Road handle the parking?
Handle what, Mr. Bezani?
Parking.
Well, it's a, 37 Marine Road was under the old base code, and one and two families are exempt from off-street parking requirements.
Okay. And this is going, you're within the base flood elevation?
Oh, no, we are not.
No, you're not?
No, we are not.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
For the board, John Ellis in Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in opposition at this time. We did hold two Butters' meetings. I would like to recognize that the proponent did take a story off the building, so it is now a three-story building, but there is still a lot of opposition to this project and really to having anything built in this backyard for many reasons. Thank you.
Hi, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. We're here to oppose this project due to significant opposition from Butters, over 100 emails and calls that we got in our office about it. Thanks.
Ms. President, this is Paul Sullivan of the City Council Lodge, Michael Flaherty. Counsel to go on record in strong opposition. Echoing sentiments of the Mayor's Office and standing with the neighbors.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ronald Claude from Counsel Yana Presty's office, and we'd like to go on the record as opposing this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Counselor Sabby George would like to go on record in opposition.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Kristen Halbert for Counsel at Large Michelle Wu's office, and we'd like to go on record in opposition of this project.
Hi, my name is Paul Burke. I'm a director Butter. I live at 35 Marine Road, South Boston.
Can you, can you guys please help us in speaking to the mic?
Okay.
And also, just as I'd ask previous speakers, tell us, give us new information, okay?
Right. My name is Paul Burke. I live at 35 Marine Road. I'm a direct Butter to 8 Deedee's Lane slash 37 Marine Road. Hundreds of signatures and letters have been sent to the board previously. The one thing I would like to submit to the board now is a signed letter from the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, opposing that. That was not presented to the board previous to that.
Thank you.
I also have a quick, just a picture I'd like to give to the board while I speak very briefly. May I? As the board, this project splits a small parcel into two smaller lots. As such, the nature, size, and scope are in direct conflict with the Butting properties. Speaking to Mr. Johnson's argument about the number of buildings that are on Deedee's Lane, one is a barn that has been there for over 100 years. It's two stories. The other building was a rebuilt building. It's much smaller in height, and also it's much shorter in depth. As far as a quarter of life, it's insensitive to the scale form and density to the established neighborhood character. While this building does provide two parking spots for it, parking that is now currently used for 37 Marine Road is eliminated, so those now will have to find off-street parking. It also, the height and the width will present a shade issue for all the properties that no longer have that. In 2018, the mayor extended the iPod for one year. I believe it was a tool to balance the demand for new growth while protecting and maintaining the character of the fabric of the neighborhood. I believe this is a perfect example of why the iPod was put in place, and I ask you that you deny this petition.
Thank you.
Lisa Cox, 365 K Street. I would just like to go on record as being opposed to this project.
Thank you.
Frederick Crone, 45 Marine Road. I'm in a Butter to the property.
Can you name again?
Frederick Crone.
Thank you.
Yeah, 45 Marine Road. I'm opposed to the project for the quality of life impact that was outlined previously.
My name is Leonard Walsh. I reside at 1588 Columbia Road, South Boston. I'm a director Butter in honor of the property, and I am in opposition of the addition.
Marie Genton, Director Butter. I am in total opposition with this project as well.
Philip McMahon, resident, 47 Marine Road for 40 years. Lived in South Boston for 75 years, and I just want to go on record that I'm opposed to this project. Thank you.
Colleen Neef, 41 Marine Road. I'm opposed to this for the same reasons that were stated, but also for the precedence that this would set, because the developers are speaking, but this is two lots. This is one lot, I've lived as a direct Butter for 45 years. It's one lot that they're cutting in two. So one small backyard, one house will now have no backyard, and the other one will have, what, 10 feet perhaps? So it's totally against the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thomas Walsh, 381 K Street. Opposed also.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Burke, I'm a director Butter at 35 Marine Road, and I'm opposed.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a motion to oppose.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This project's been denied.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling an ex case, calling BOA 796-341, 63 to 65 Marlin Street. This is to construct a new eight-unit building. The violation is Article 50, Section 28. A multi-family is forbidden use. Article 50, Section 29, additional lot area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, the building height is excessive in feet. Article 50, Section 29, usable open space is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 29, the front yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small of the Business District, 15 Broad Street, Boston, Mass. 02109. With me today are Evan Smith of Place Taylor and Travis Anderson of Place Taylor. Today, we are here seeking relief to erect eight residential units with nine--
If you're in favor, just bring the--
We are here seeking relief to erect eight residential units with nine parking spaces on a vacant--
Eight units?
Eight residential units.
You're still doing eight units?
Yep.
Okay.
Nine parking spaces on a vacant lot that's approximately 10,400 square feet. The zoning sub-district is 3F4,000, and the violations are as follows. Multi-family residential use is forbidden. We're proposing eight units. The additional lot area is 2,000 for each. The FAR, Madam Chair, is .8. We are coming in at .84, just a little bit over the required FAR. The building height, the requirement is 35 feet. From the sidewalk, it's 38 feet. The proposal is 38 feet, but from grade, it's 35. The open space is required is 5,859. We're coming in at 3,240 square feet. And with regard to the front yard, the requirement is 20 feet. We have 13.5. I'll turn it over now to Travis Anderson, who will go through the site plan and get you familiarized with the plan.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Travis Anderson, Place Taylor, 108 Warren Street. I'll just talk through the initial sighting and massing of the building. Upon early site analysis, we decided to use an existing curb cut for the building, and that, in order to do so, made us push the building forward toward Marlin Street so we could accommodate the nine parking spaces in the back. That's the reason--
Does that meet modal front yard?
There is no modal, because it's on a corner, and it's the only building on that lot. It is pretty much in approximation to the building on the other side of Montrose Street, which is another brick multi-family, so they will align, but there is no modal that we need to conform to. Along the Montrose side, we actually shifted the building more to the other side yard to try to keep that green space along there, with the intent of maintaining some of the trees that are existing on the site that are some nice older pines and whatnot. And then, in terms of the overall massing, we know that this is a historic neighborhood by nature, so we looked at breaking down the massing or parti into three distinct building typologies. The first is a mansard unit that sits directly on the corner. The middle is a brick rowhouse, so to say, and then the end unit is a bayfront that keeps with the ties and the vernacular of the entire neighborhood. We also talked with the Boston Preservation Alliance about the historic qualities of the, of the building, and they actually are on board and support as well. During one of the community meetings, an issue about fencing and screening came up, so we're looking at, you know, doing a rod iron type fence that fits more within the context of the neighborhood.
Fencing and screening of what?
Just along--
Of the entire?
Along the front, facing Marlin, because when you walk down Marlin Street, there is a lot of nice kind of old ironwork and whatnot. So it is our intent to really kind of hold true to the, to the neighborhood in the style of the building and to also accommodate parking concerns. And as far as green space goes, there is a park that's diagonal to the lot. I actually live in the neighborhood and use the park with my daughter all the time. It's a great space, so.
So tell us how the parking is supposed to work? So these are all surface, surface parking spaces?
It's all surface parking spaces. You'll come in off the existing curb cut on Montrose, and then pull facing in, or you could back in, and you'll butt the rear of the building. We'll have a little bit of a, like a five-foot buffer there, but--
And is there, is there screening proposed from, at the rear of, at the Montrose edge of the Butter?
Yeah, that's part of the reason why we want to maintain that landscape buffer, and we could also do a privacy fence. We'll, of course, enclose any trash or anything like that, too, as privacy screening. Yep.
And roof decks?
There's one for the three-bedroom. So the unit breakdown is a seven, 800-square-foot, two-bedroom units, and then there's one three-bedroom unit that's approximately 1,400 square feet. That one has a roof deck that faces kind of the backyard.
Tell us the plans, Mr. Bezani.
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
What's on the site now?
It's an empty, it's a vacant lot.
The whole lot, yeah. And are these for sale or rental units?
These are going to be for sale units, and part of where we've reached some opposition with the neighborhood has been on the unit count. As of right, we can do five units, and we're asking for eight units. The reason specifically that we're asking for eight units is that we're trying to build condos that are selling below 400,000. Right now, you know, if we were to try to build the five as of right, we'd end up with 1,600, 1,700 square-foot units that we'd have to sell somewhere in the 700,000s. There's a lot of that happening in its part of Roxbury already, and there's very little coming to market that's available below 400,000. So the idea here is to build two-bedroom condos that are built to passive house standards, which are really energy efficient, and put them at a price point that, you know, people can afford, so.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, with regard to community process, we've had a couple of meetings with Pathways, Roxbury Pathways Neighborhood Association, and we had a butters meeting sponsored by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Unfortunately, there is some opposition to the project, and we do have support for the project as well.
Mixed bag.
Mixed bag.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Boston City Councilor Kim Janey, representing Roxbury. I do not come to this decision lightly. After careful consideration, after hearing from several of my neighbors, residents who live in this area, I've heard definitely strong opposition, but I have also heard from residents who support this. And they do so for a number of reasons. I know that there has been deep concern around density, the difference of the two units going from eight to six, and parking, but I think there are other things that outweigh that, namely, the price point. If they are forced to go with five units, that will lock many of the residents in Roxbury who are current residents out, and they will not be able to afford this. By offering eight units, you will have a price point that is more likely to attract people from our community to be able to purchase their first home. These are all homeownership units. Again, I don't take this lightly. I know that there is support, and I know that there is also opposition. The other things that I looked at as a city council, which is very important to me, is the equity piece, the piece around MBEs and WBEs, and making sure that they are not only workers on this job, but are also owners. So, I know that Place Taylor is a co-op that has 40% minority ownership, and that is also important to me. The final thing is that this is a sustainable project, and so that is very important. And so, while I hear the concerns around parking and density, I believe that is a larger issue that we must address as a city, that as we continue to grow, our population is growing, our challenges around traffic patterns, parking are very problematic, I think, for us as a city that we really need to tackle. So, I would encourage, because of the MBE, because of the price point of these units, because of the process, and that there is support, I would recommend your support as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to speak with any of the residents who are here. I know that there are mostly residents here in opposition and in support. I'm happy to speak with anyone afterwards. Thank you.
Greetings, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joshua McFadden, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support as well.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ronald Claude from Councilor Yana Pressley's office. She would like to note that we would like to go in support of this project, and we would like to note the fact that we support the district council and her rationale on it, so, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Kelly Ranson, Councilor, Sabi George's office. The counselor shares the concerns of the neighborhood regarding the size and respects their position, but she also trusts Councilor Janey's judgment, so therefore she is in support of this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Kristen Halberg from Councilor Michelle Wu's office would like to go on record in support of this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, Office of District Counsel, Elijah Michael Flaherty. I agree with the sentiments of Councilor Janey. The council would like to go on record in support.
Solomon Chowdhury, 37 Morland Street. I also own 60 Morland Street, which is right across from the subject property, here to support the project.
Is anybody, are you speaking in support, or is that... May I have, anybody who's here to speak in opposition? Please let me hear from you, and again, as I said before, give us new information, okay? And you can line up in the center.
Hi, my name is Lorraine Wheeler, and I organize the Neighborhood Association, you know, that organizes the neighborhood cleanup and all of these other processes. And we met at a community butters meeting that Joshua organized, and we met as a Neighborhood Association. And at none of those meetings was there support for this project, so we haven't talked to any of the people who are here from the city and support this project, although we have...
So, can I ask you, Lorraine, what is the opposition based on? Is it... Go ahead.
The neighborhood is 3F, a three-family district neighborhood. It's a historic, a federal-registered historic district. The lot is 10,600 square feet, so it's five as of right, and we still said, then build six. But they need to build the most, because the ownership of the lot is in New York, and so it's difficult for us that... And we're appealing to you today to enforce the zoning, because these black neighborhoods, they cannot exist if all the time. They've got to go to Superior Court before the legal zoning is enforced. The legal zoning is five units, and we have offered them six. Eight is too much. It's in the middle of a two-way street that is a very busy street. It's surrounded by these three-family buildings, and we are simply, before they bought it, they should have looked at the legal zoning. So, I have 60 signatures on a petition. There's at least 40 letters in opposition that's been sent to your office, and so I'm going to give you those, as well as the ownership of the lot. And we are just going to pray that you are going to support these neighbors before we're all pushed out of Roxbury. And I have one other thing to say. One of the people that came here in support of it is a developer, too. He lives on Hutchins Street, and so, of course, they're going to support one another with regard to these projects that don't have support from the actual residents.
Thank you.
I'm Cheryl Spence. I'm in a butter, 33 Montrose Street, Unit 3. I'm also speaking on behalf of Jose Rodriguez, who is 33 Montrose Street, Unit 1. He's not able to be here. I just want to say that I am opposed to these six variances. I live on the third floor. I'm opposed to the height variance of five, five feet above grade. It's a lack of privacy to myself. There's a lack of green space. All these things have to be met. There's criteria for the Board of Appeals, and I'm sure you're aware of it, that there are four criteria to be met, all to be met. They meet none of them. The only variance that they did not, they came here that they don't need is for parking. It's an insult to the community to come with six variances, to build something that is legally not supposed to be there, according to our zoning rules. We have rights as butters. It's a lack of privacy, and I really am opposed to this project. I'm opposed to roof decks. There's no roof decks in that area.
Okay.
I'd also like to say that it's just really a shame that we did come together as a community and agreed, and it wasn't until two or three days ago that there came this opposition from Kim Janey's office. I don't understand why, but this is crazy.
Listen, everybody who's lined up here, give me information on the project, okay?
All right. That's the information I have. It exceeds all the variances, and we have a right as a butter.
So, you just think it's too dense?
Too dense?
Basically.
And it doesn't meet any of the criteria to get a variance. Their next point of relief is six units. They don't want to agree to six units.
Thank you. Ma'am, you name an address?
My name is Marcia Smith, and I live at number 94 Morland Street, though for the 30 years lived around the corner on the next street, so long-term resident. I have here in hand a letter from State Representative Tyler, who is standing with us, opposing the...
Okay.
...at the size of the variances. I, I wasn't supposed to have spoken. You talked about the number 75.
Can you speak into the mic? I, for some reason today, I'm having an awful time hearing.
Okay, is this better?
Yes, thank you.
What was referred to as a vacant lot is sort of, not right. It was a beautiful garden, flower trees, that were very well maintained by the adjacent owner, the ones the developer bought this from. So, you're going from what was a very, very beautiful piece of property in terms of the landscaping there, to neighbors are going to look out at parking, and back porches, garbage cans, whatever. To enter, they say they have nine parking spaces. One of the problems with the parking is you're going to come onto a very narrow, one-way street to get to that parking, so the people who are sitting opposite on Montrose Street are going to have steady traffic coming in from Montrose Street. Also, with visitors, there is not, again, going to be enough parking. I live at, I don't have a driveway. I live at number 94, many, many nights, coming from shopping and all. I have to park one, two blocks down and lug my bags up, because already there's not enough parking. The difficulty of getting into the parking behind that building is going to mean there's going to be more parking on the street, and it's just going to make it very difficult for that area. The street is a very beautiful street. It is, that section of Morland Street is historic. Their buildings mine dates back, I think, to 1890, other buildings which were around turn of the century. Many of them had horse garages in the back and all. Putting a building flush upon the sidewalk, crammed, nine units, is going to totally destroy the look of that neighborhood. This would not happen in the South End. It would not happen in Brookline. It would not happen in Newton, and it's happening in Roxbury, and the very people who say they represent us are standing here opposed to our interests. I beg you to consider that this is not appropriate for our neighborhood.
Thank you. Now, so far, for the rest of you who are going to be giving testimony in opposition, I've heard about the concern that, or the statement that this is a historic district, the concern about the trees, the density, the privacy. If you have, please add more information to that, otherwise put your name and address on the record, okay?
Chair and members of the board, I would just like to add my name in opposition. Carrie Ann Shan at 37 Montrose.
Thank you.
My name is Bethel Rose. I would like to add opposition. I am at 37 Fairland Street.
Thank you.
My name is Charlotte Marie Patilla. I reside at 29 Montrose Street. I'm in a butter. I oppose this in addition to all the reasons previously cited, including density, green space, lack of privacy. I want to address safety. As some of the folks here have mentioned, this particular lot, a Buxton intersection that abuts a park, is a very, very dangerous intersection. People slow roll right through it. People sometimes treat the stop signs as optional. Putting more cars and more people in that neighborhood is not going to make us safer or stronger. Our kids are going to be in more danger as they travel to the parks. In addition to that, I do not share the claim that somehow a $350,000 price point is going to make this more accessible to my other neighbors.
So, let's just talk about the zoning. All that stuff is on the side. You know, the stuff that I really want to hear about is the FAR, the height, the open space, those kind of issues. So, besides safety, anything else? And I know you mentioned everything previous speakers had identified.
No, Madam Chair, since I would note that the developers have not articulated to anybody's satisfaction, or even to any understanding, how this could possibly meet the criteria for a variance, and how it could possibly withstand appeal. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Saul Araujo. I reside on the 29 Montrose Street, and I strongly oppose this project. Besides the points that have been raised, I mean, the issue of the, not only high density in the community, but also the nature of the housing. That'll be smaller housing, that is not going to be creating families who move there, people who are going to move there, not going to create roots, because it's very small apartments. So, this is in fact the livelihood of the community. So, for this reason, I strongly oppose this project.
Thank you.
I'm Shawna Bramble, and I live at 64 Morland Street. My house will be directly across from the project, and I am opposed to it.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shawna Bramble, and I live at 64 Morland Street, and my house is right across the street from the development. And I, so, I completely oppose this project. Thank you.
My name is Michelle Bramble. I live at 64 Morland Street, directly across from the lot, and I am opposed to it as well. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Ashley Shan, 37 Montrose Street, Unit 2. I strongly oppose.
My name is Bolade Olawa. I live at 56 Morland Street. I've lived there for 30 years, and I strongly oppose the development.
I'm sorry, what street do you live on?
Morland Street, 56 Morland, rather, across from the development.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, so you've heard, you've heard all the statements so far. Can you please address some of the open space issues, the preservation of trees, whatever it is? And how is the parking going to work? Because did I hear that, that the street is one-way, that Montrose is one-way? So, how will that work?
Correct. Yeah, we actually considered doing an additional curb cut along Morland Street, but as was mentioned, it is a two-way street, and we actually thought this would actually create more of traffic calming if people looped around to the one-way, rather than having cars kind of coming in and out of Morland, because it does get busy, and I agree with all the sentiment that people just drive too fast on that street.
No, I, yes, and that rolling stop, I get it.
And the rolling stop is an issue, yeah. And so, that's why we looked at maintaining that curb cut along Montrose, really to act as more of a buffer to the amount of traffic flow through there. And in regards to open space, unfortunately, when you add cars, you take away green space. If we could, we would not put any parking there and have more green space and position the building back further, but we just had to accommodate the parking as a result. But we did, as I mentioned earlier, we did keep the building positioned off of Montrose to maintain that buffer that's there, in the hopes of keeping some of the trees on the site. We actually went out there early on and did a little site excavation. There's putting stone on the site, so it's another reason why the building's coming out on the ground a bit more, is to minimize the impact of construction, and it was also another reason to kind of position the building where we did, because we're up against the ground. Also, it's worth noting that even if we did the five units, the as-of-right move here, the size of the building wouldn't really change, because we are just slightly over the FAR. We can easily bring it under the FAR with five units. Again, this is about, you know, the type of housing we want to be selling. We don't want to be selling high-end units. We're trying to do workforce housing, and we're trying to do it without tax subsidy.
Any final words? Given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with continued VPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries continued BRA design review, and please make sure you continue to talk to your butters.
Most definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Following the next case, calling BOA 766-691, 222 Harvard Street. This is a change of occupancy from three to six apartments, with new egress stairways of three-level porch. A violation to Article 60, Section 8. A multifamily residential is forbidden use in a 3F, 5,000 sub-district, and Article 60, Section 9, insufficient additional lot area per dwelling unit. Name and address for the record, please.
Douglas Wan, architect, 422 Harvard Street. Owner is here, Mr. Ovi Gray. I'm going to hand out the copies, updated plan, and updated zoning refusal letter from ISD planners. If you... If you're left on, you can just go into the back room.
Doug, in the meantime, can you please put your name and record on the, put your name and address on the record and proceed with the testimony?
Madam Chair, what's your question again, please?
Put your name and address on the record, and let's get started.
My name is Douglas Wan, 240 Heath Street, JP.
Can you tell us what, what happened, why you were deferred, and what has happened since the deferral?
Yeah, we went through the, a few neighborhood meetings, and, including a butter neighborhoods without any opposition, but with all the support. And we went through the Cottman Square Council, neighborhood council twice, and Harvard Blue Hill Circle, we did that, but the only neighborhood that we want to go through that we didn't get scheduled is Harvard Talbot Triangle Neighborhood. For that, we do want to go through that, but somehow we were told not necessary, so...
So, this is still a proposal to change occupancy from three to six apartments?
Right, without any constructions.
Without, sorry?
Without any constructions. In the handouts, in the middle of that, that's existing building. We are not building any additions.
Okay. So, tell us how the units are going to lay out? What are their sizes? How many... What are their sizes, how many bedrooms?
In the front, that's manufactured two units that have been occupied for more than a few decades. In the back, including the, all the basement from the back to the rear, that's new, unoccupied yet, so we can easily divide it into, create more housing units. So, if you see it...
Sorry, let me just be, I'm just, want to make sure that you tell us precisely how these three to six units are going to work, no possibilities, fact, or within the plan.
If I may, Madam Chair, simply, the front is occupied for 30 or more years. Now available, as of all approved, habitable space is this third floor, second floor, including basement from here to all the way to the front. Those are all approved habitable space, that's very, the big space, quite a lot, that we want to create more housing units. And he lives in this building and he want to occupy to have a little studio in the ground floor that is all completely open to the rear yard, and one unit, another unit, second floor, another unit in the first floor, if you can see this total.
Okay, so, I'm looking, so, let's get this straight. So, unit number one, is that the basement? And how big is it and how many bedrooms is it? Let's talk about the basement.
Yeah, the size is just less than 1,250, I would say 1,150 square foot plus minus.
Okay, so this is the basement, the proposed basement plan will be one unit, 1,200 square feet.
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, it's, what is there now is all approved habitable space, it's much bigger than that, actually.
So tell me, number, unit number two, where is it?
Number two would be first floor.
Okay.
Number, the next unit would be...
No, 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 hold on. So be first floor, how many square feet?
1,150 plus minus.
1,150.
1,150.
And how many bedrooms?
We drew three bedrooms, but the BRA mechanic was, it's too small, so we changed it to two for the input.
So you're on the record saying it's a two-bedroom?
Right.
How about unit number three?
Same, two-bedroom, same layout.
Okay. How about unit number four?
Same layout, the same size, on the top floor of this existing building envelope.
And so where's, where are unit number five and six?
That's here in the front.
Okay.
That has been occupied for, since...
So when you say the front means it's that existing building, that existing house?
Right.
So this, this little house is considered, you're considering it the front?
Right.
And it's all on the same lot?
Oh, yes.
All on the same lot?
Right.
Okay, tell us...
It's a very deep lot.
And how, and tell us how many units and beside, with the, how many bedrooms?
It's a quarter acre. And his brother lives in the same place, another quarter acre.
I just want to hear about unit five, how many square feet, how many bedrooms?
The same size.
So it's 1,150 and it's two-bedroom?
Plus minus, yes.
And unit number six, same thing?
Right.
Okay, now tell us about unit number one, is that a basement, basement unit? Or is it, and what's the floor-to-ceiling height?
Ceiling height is enough, eight feet plus...
It's eight feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's, it's just built as a new construction a year ago.
Okay, and so this building, this construction happened and then you were triggered to come here?
A year ago, yes, a year ago.
Okay, and you were deferred to do community process?
Yes.
Why were you deferred?
We went through the three neighborhood meetings, including a butter neighborhood with their support.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are ready.
Yes. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of what I had to do?
Is that, is there a wall between those two, the little building and the bigger building? Is it a party wall?
There is a, right, because we added their fire code, building code, we would call one-hour separation, even if it's a one building and a one lot, same lot, so...
So is that, that little building is still existing, is currently existing, somebody's living in it, and it's attached to the bigger one?
Yes, we added this addition in the back of that building a year ago and we...
How did you get that?
It's all approved.
Hold on, hold on. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Whitney Celestin here with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held an extensive community process for this project. This project was deferred because we wanted to have more community process. So we took this to the Harvard Blue Hill Circle Neighborhood Association and to the Codman Square Neighborhood Council. The council did not take a position, but the Harvard Neighborhood Association did give me a letter of opposition. I feel like this project should have came to the community beforehand. This structure is built on the land already, it's already there, you know? So, it, it just puts us in a weird position at this point, so...
Can you tell me what the opposi, can you tell me what the opposition was based on?
Yes.
Mostly the fact that the construction had already occurred?
Yes, that's part of it. And also, it would just add too much density to the area, there is a lot of land in the back, however, that would be too many people to be fitting in that one single area. There's just a lot going on in Harvard Street already and this would just not fit the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think, and...
Just to clarify, if we were to vote to deny today, would that building have to come down?
No, that's approved with two or three permits piecemeal, and we all built a year ago.
So what is it that we're being asked to approve today?
Current occupancy is total three, so that means...
So you're looking for a change of occupancy from us?
Two means three is the housing unit, sustainable. Two is, they're not going anywhere. The basement from the front all the way in the back is approved habitable floor area, and we have this building envelope existing, legal.
Okay, so if we were to vote to deny your request today, then you would have to end up with fewer units total inside.
Right, but that's, that's a huge area to...
I'm just, I'm just clarifying.
Okay, we're just, no valid judgment, just a question.
Okay.
Okay? Any, anybody else to speak in opposition?
And actually, Madam Chair, if you would like to collect it, supporting...
Thank you. Can, okay, and so we've heard a lot of information, may I have a motion, please?
And, Madam Chair, if I may, one last point.
Can you please take the board away so I can, Doug, can you take that away so I can see the speaker?
Does that work?
Back or right there?
So we can see him.
Go ahead, sorry, your name and address?
Yes, my name is Obie Gray and I live at 222 Harvard Street in Dorchester. And I own the first, the old house that I had built 30 years ago, 224. My brother owned that for 50 years and I just recently bought it. And at 220, I originally owned that building and I sold it to a neighbor in '04.
I see.
And the area that I'm trying to utilize now, I, I was in the moving business for 50 years in Massachusetts, and the space that I'm trying to utilize now, I used to park my trucks there, and I retired, so I'm trying to put up some housing for the neighborhood. That's my opposition.
If I can summarize, Madam Chair, he lives here and he owns this one, his brothers live together, it's more than a half acre. Right next door, this is grandfamilies.
Yeah, we know grandfamilies.
I believe 36 units in the same, similar lot size.
Okay.
And we are only asking, without any new construction, without any new additions, to create a proper size, 1,150 square feet of new units, more units, for the city's housing, unbalanced housing, demand and supply.
Thanks so much.
Right, right, thanks. Do it to me as a...
Hold on, hold on, guys, one more question here.
Rooney, we had, you had letters of opposition from the neighborhood?
Yes.
Can you just clarify that for me?
Yeah, I received one. Letter of opposition from the Harvard Blue Hill Neighborhood Association.
Great, thank you.
Okay, now, given all this information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to oppose.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
You're opposed to the motion?
I'm opposed to motion to oppose, yes.
Who, and who are the, who are the oppositions? Who are the oppositions to the oppositions? So there's Mark Fortune, pardon?
Against.
Wait, the motion was to oppose.
Motion was to oppose.
Who seconded?
Bruce seconded.
Who seconded?
I voted for it.
And I voted for it.
So you both voted for it, the three oppositions are Bruce, Mark, and Mark?
No, I voted for it also.
I want to know who voted against the motion?
I voted, I voted...
You voted against the motion?
Correct. And I voted against.
You voted against the motion? That's it, okay? I vote with the motion, so the motion carries.
Madam Chair...
So, thank you.
Wait, if not six units, then the board can consider five units.
We're not here to negotiate.
Okay.
You came here with a proposal, we voted on the proposal, and there's now a motion, okay? So you, you need to regroup and figure out your next steps, okay?
And we'll go through that, that neighborhood triangle.
So, yes, do what you need to do, we have agenda items, but I think you guys need to regroup and, and think about your next steps, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Is Sanford Street here? Sanford Street? Okay. There are the last four cases, so Sanford Street is not here. I'll make, Madam Chair, it's now, 10 minutes of one?
Yep.
I'm going to make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The last case is the court remand. Calling BOA 604-337-279 Marlboro Street. Could they please approach Marlboro Street? Are they here?
Is anybody here from Marlboro Street? Give us a minute.
You want to, you want to take it from here? Would you kindly put your name and address on the record, please?
Good afternoon, Paul Ruffo, Smith, Doug and Buell and Ruffo, 101 Federal Street, Boston, for the applicant, Michael Giuliani.
Hold on, the applicant means, the 277 Marlboro, owner of 277 Marlboro Street?
279.
279, so you represent, Mr. Ruffo, 279 Marlboro Street?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Will the other members seated at the table, please identify themselves?
Michael Giuliani with Eaglebrook Engineering Survey for 91 Maple Street in Denver.
And who do you represent?
Also the applicant at...
279?
279, yes.
Okay.
Matthew Walco, law firm, Smith, Doug and Buell and Ruffo, for the applicant, 279 Marlboro Street.
Is anybody here for 277 Marlboro Street?
Aye.
Your name and address?
I was a property manager for 277 Marlboro Street.
Okay, will you please have a seat at the table? So this is, so this is a court remand, and what I'd like to do is to reconsider and reopen the case of BOA number 604337. I would like to have the owner of 277 Marlboro Street put their name and address on the record and tell us about the proposal for, and the request for, we heart believe.
Madam Chair, just one slight correction, again, it's 279 Marlboro Street, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm so confused.
That's okay.
Okay, 279 Marlboro Street.
Right.
Okay, so please, this is reopening the case?
Yes.
So please tell us, okay, yes, so please give us testimony, this is a new hearing, give us testimony.
Right, thank you. So we have prepared a package for the administrative record, what I'd like to do, just by way of brief overview, Madam Chair, members of the board, is, just describe that this is a total rehab of this building at 279 Marlboro, so as a result, a groundwater recharge system had to be installed under Article 32. Article 6 was implicated, because it's referenced in Article 32, on the issue of whether the groundwater recharge system would cause any nuisance or have any impact on any surrounding property. So, treating this as if it were, in effect, a new hearing, we went out and hired, the owner went out and hired at Eaglebrook Engineering and Survey, and Michael Giuliani, who is a registered professional engineer specializing in this area, who's the principal, prepared a report for us, which we've submitted to you, and with your permission, I'd like him to walk through the report. We've also, which will explain, just in summary, will explain how they did the calculations, how we approached the project, how we determined whether the groundwater recharge system would comply with Article 32 requirements, how he...
Before, let me just find out, because generally, on the groundwater, we need to know that, did you get a, a letter from Boston Water and Sewer, which reviewed the groundwater recharge, and did, did you have a letter in talking about conformity or non-conformity to the recharge requirements?
Yes, we do.
Do you have that in your package?
That's in the package and it's a letter from Louis Malara, Site Plan Engineer, and it goes back to the August 22, 2016 timeframe.
And where can I find it in the package?
It's the third document down.
You see it?
Yes.
Okay, oh, I, I get it, okay?
Right, and Mr. Giuliani, again, at the time in August of 2016, that this application first came before the board, niche engineering, I'm sure the board is familiar with, had performed all the calculations for the system that was ultimately constructed, and they're the architect, I'm sorry, they're the engineer of record on this project, and specifically with regard to this groundwater recharge system. But for purposes of this hearing, we had an independent, obviously he's paid by my client, but independent in the sense of, we asked him to come back, recheck everything, all of that.
And what is your conclusion? Just your conclusion.
My conclusion is that the, based on my site visit on April 27, based on the review of all the documents entered to this project, and based on the independent calculations I did for the, determining the volume of the recharge system, that the roof runoff and recharge system meets requirements of the groundwater overlay district, meets requirements of the Boston Water Soil Regulations, that the system will be able to handle one inch of runoff off the impervious areas as required by the regulations, and that the roof runoff and the recharge system will not have an adverse impact on the abiding properties.
Okay, thank you. Christian, would you like to get testimony?
Madam Chair, this is the board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. So this case was before you on January 10, 2017, and at that time, we testified that we did indeed have the approval letter from Water and Sewer, which was also dated August 22, 2016.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, Christian, the letter in the package, which is number three, is dated June 3, 2016. Is there a subsequent letter?
There were two versions of, of the letter, the first version, excuse me, the June... The first version, excuse me, the June third, two thousand sixteen version had a capacity, the system capacity, at two hundred and thirty-two cubic feet. And the updated August twenty-second, two thousand sixteen letter had an updated capacity of two hundred and twenty-five cubic feet. Still exceeded the two hundred and twenty-four cubic foot requirement. It was essentially just a revision of the capacity of the system, just an update of that number.
Mr. Rufo, is the August letter in your package?
It is, it should be the third document down. I think you're down a little bit too far, Mr. Pizzani.
Yes, you can see- Do you want, yeah, they're right there. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Now, we understand you as the representative, two twenty-seven is an opposition, has, wants voice concerns, so please put your name and address on the record.
Maggie Hady, two seventy-seven Marlboro Street. And I just want to make sure, does the board have a copy of partnership here of the letter?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
It was just distributed.
Okay. And I just want to submit one of the documents for the board here.
Please summarize for us what, what your concern is.
So, I'm in at two seventy-seven Marlboro Street, Maggie says two thousand nine. The property, after they constructed the groundwater recharge system, we got flooded.
So, hold on, so after, after the installation of the system, you got flooded?
That's correct.
Was the installation running? Well, I mean, it might have been installed, but it might have not been turned on.
I observed that the pipes were there, I saw the construction, they didn't pour the final concrete lid on it, but I observed the gravel, I observed the pipes, so it was mostly constructed.
When was it flooding?
When did the flooding take place?
Yes.
It's in the letter, it took place in it's actually in the letter there.
Was it March twentieth, two thousand seventeen?
I do apologize, it takes some of my mind. It is referenced in the letter there.
Yes, if you're helpful for us to know, if you, if you can summarize, please, whatever it is in this letter? Okay?
So, the issue that we had originally when we came to the board, the first issue, firstly, we didn't, they didn't let the attorneys speak. What our biggest concern is the fact that this system, based on what we have for information, is going to cause an adverse effect to the property of two seventy-seven Marlboro Street. And I could elaborate more. I had a, an engineer, Kaluki Engineering Corporation, review the property after the flood. The flood, he did a, a, a letter, I can actually read it into the record, I'd like to.
You actually put it into the record, but summarize, summarize the findings.
Kaluki Engineering, Chini Vazza, Chini Vazza has designed numerous groundwater recharge systems in Boston. He's very familiar with the groundwater recharge system. Unfortunately, the fortunate service is, he's not able to come to this meeting today. The findings from Chini Vazza, Kaluki Engineering, is that the problem with this system is the close proximity, as you can see from my schematic here showing the elevations, the system is only a couple of feet from the living space next door at two seventy-seven Marlboro Street. It's, the groundwater elevation at this site is six point three. The bottom of the system is seven point six two. We're next door, our, our basement elevation is eight, this is Boston City Base. We're literally two feet from the system. So they dumped the water in the system, it's going to go out, it's going to mount, and we got flooded. And we got flooded previously.
Mr. Hady, can I just read one question? Because I'm just reading it now, it says, it says flooding of the basement in the unit of my client's property in the fall of two thousand sixteen.
Yes.
But doesn't say what particular-
I thought it was his.
If you go to the next page after your affidavit, that's the next page, it says on certain proceedings before the Eastern Housing Court?
Yes.
It prompted by the flooding of a basement unit at my client's property in the fall of two thousand sixteen?
Yes.
Okay. You know what particular month, or?
You know, I, I do, I saw, I'm sorry, it was October or November.
So, let me just ask, what is the basement use of your building?
So there's, there's going to be a three-car garage vertically, used for the, in that area.
So there's no habitable space?
No. And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Andrew Dick, can you address this issue of-
But, hold on.
Yeah, okay.
And that habitable space that's at two seventy-seven, is that legally, has that been legalized?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes.
For sure?
Yes, I understand, I had the plan signed off on my estate.
Okay.
And basement, bedrooms.
Yeah.
And they got flooded.
When, when was that legalized, or when was that?
It was some of the nineties.
Okay, so it's, it's before all these regulations were in place? Basically, G-Cod regulations were in place, okay? Okay, so, continue.
Yes, so, as you can see from the schematic here, the close proximity of the groundwater recharge system, the bottom system is seven point six two, groundwater is six point three. Our basement level, we're at elevation eight, the bottom of the system. I'm sorry, the bottom of our basement. And we're on the other side of the wall there. And as you guys know, that bay, it's, you know, there's water down there, you dig down, you have water. So the groundwater is six point, six point three. So, you know, I, I don't think it takes a rocket scientist to figure out, where's this water going to go? You go, you go put it into this recharge system, it's going to spread out, it's going to go through ground, it's going to mount. And we're only two feet away, the living space, the unit there. A couple of things that have to come into play. The system has a overflow valve, that at two seventy-nine, they got proposed as overflow valve. So what's supposed to happen is if this system fills up, and it can't rec pend fast enough, it's supposed to overflow into the city sewer. And then they got a backflow valve on it. And the problem is, is the city sewers occasionally, they fill up and they surge. So if the city sewer fills up and surges, the backflow valve engages that way. But when it engages, it prevents water from going into the system at two seventy-nine Marlboro Street. And it also prevents the water from the system two seventy-nine Marlboro Street, the overflow water to go into the shared, the shared sewer and drainage that's in the back of the alley two seven, four seventeen. And so that's the problem, when that, when that takes place, when the system, the city system surges, the water's in the system, that the groundwater system is going to mount. And the water's going to go wherever it can go.
Can I, can I? I'm, I'm a little confused, I'm reading this and it happened in two thousand sixteen, correct? The flooding?
Yes.
This board didn't see this until August of two thousand sixteen.
I'm looking at a letter that says that there was a site that received the flooding on February seventh, two thousand seventeen. It wouldn't have taken three months to see the damage.
When did, can, can maybe somebody help me out here? When did the recharge system, when was it put in?
So go ahead. Well, the recharge system was installed and inspected by what, Boston Water Sewer, August, excuse me, October sixteen, twenty sixteen. It wasn't, the roof drains were not hooked up to the recharge system until February first of twenty seventeen. So it wasn't operational at the time of the flood.
So the, so it was completely operational in February of twenty-two, February seven, February seventeen, twenty seventeen? And this issue of the flooding occurred in the fall of twenty sixteen, before installation and before, well, while, during installation of the recharge system?
Is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct.
The system was not connected up. In other words, none of the water, when it, when it rained, when there was a significant rain event in October of two thousand sixteen, when the flood, when the flood was alleged to have occurred.
Do you agree with his timing, that the flooding happened in the fall of two thousand sixteen?
It was October twenty-first of twenty sixteen.
Thank you.
We've not been allowed to inspect the property, but that's sort of another issue. But the timing of it, October, mid-October of two thousand sixteen, we've got the water records, if you will, the rainfall records from that date all the way to the present. There've been many other events since then, etc.
Hold on, so there've been other-
There've been many other events that have, have met or exceeded that. And there've been no other flooding that's been reporting, reported to us.
We've had-
As a result of it.
Yeah, we've had probably fifteen strong, some events, three of them probably equivalent to the one October twenty-first. And, you know, we're unaware of any flooding since, you know, the system was hooked up in February twenty seventeen.
Has there been flooding, has there been flooding since October?
So, the unit has not been flooded, but I just want to point out again, they did have access to the property. Both their engineers, this one-
No, no, listen, I, I, I just want to kind of focus on facts, because, you know, I'm not, I'm not a big drama person. So, I'm just trying to focus on facts. So this is, this is the, the, the information in the package that talks about the flooding. And, and do you have a copy of this?
Which, which court is that in? Is that in your-
That's the well data.
So this-
Is that from the geotechnical court?
No.
Which, which court is that in?
It's from the-
Oh, was it submitted?
So this is the McPhail-
All right, now it's got submitted.
Okay, so, so tell us what this, this shows us. Tell us, tell us October, show us October-
Right.
Twenty-first, twenty sixteen, what the, what the impact is.
That data is the well data from the groundwater trust, which is available on their website, which shows historic levels that they've monitored. There's two wells nearby, one at the corner of Marlboro and Fairfield, and the, another well at the corner of Fairfield and Public Alley, four seventeen. And what it shows at the time in October of twenty sixteen, that the groundwater elevation was approximately between four and four point five in elevation.
Okay. And that's when the flooding occurred? Okay, so tell us subsequent about other highs. High, what, what was the highest that you observed at, at either one of these spots?
Well, the most recent data, which would be April twenty-second or twenty-third of this year, is six point three seven. That's the highest, highest it's been probably in the last three or four years.
I'm sorry, six point three seven?
Yes, that's, that's data that was just taken from well number twenty fourteen. There's also data from well twenty forty-one, which is six point four nine.
Okay. Okay.
If I could comment on this, the, the data that they're referencing is from our website under our monitoring well page. And that is our data logger information for that area. So we data logged those three wells in that area for the purpose of monitoring a repair that was made by Water and Sewer in November of two thousand seventeen. And you can see a massive spike around that time, right before, about a week before Thanksgiving, there was a leaking sewer in the area. Water and Sewer fixed the sewer, groundwater levels came up two to now, in some cases, three plus feet over a period of about six months. So that's the cause ultimately for that rapid jump. And now we're starting to see essentially a spread out effect about a block in either direction. So in referring to the highest levels ever, that was really the main driver of that big jump in groundwater levels in that area.
I'm, so, I'm just trying to get the timeline clear. October twenty-first, two thousand sixteen is when you said the flooding happened in two seventy-seven. At that time, the groundwater recharge system was installed but not connected.
It was installed but not connected, correct?
Good. It was installed and connected in February two thousand seventeen?
Beginning of February two thousand seventeen.
And you did a site visit on February seventh?
No, I-
Who, who, who did the site visit? Calcante engineer?
That's your, your engineer.
Yes, he did the site visit, two seventy-seven, the basement there.
Okay, and at that point it was connected?
After February first.
Okay, so here is my question, it's a sixty thousand dollar question. From the February date in which it was connected, has there been any flooding between that date and today in two seventy-seven?
We haven't been-
No, you're going to, yes or no?
Come in.
Has there been flooding in two seventy-seven between February of two thousand seventeen and today?
Not that I know of.
So, is it wrong to assume that the problem was related to the lack of connectivity?
I'd like to have the time.
So, so, hold on, this is- This is not a discussion, let me just, okay? So you've put your testimony on the record? You've put your testimony, are you, are you, are you comfortable with the testimony you've put on the record? Or would you like to add anymore?
I just want to add one other thing. So, I, I have a copy of the GeoPass report that their engineer did. And I met with their engineers, both engineers, I met with Nitch and I met with McPhail Associates, Harry. And I want to make sure, it's, it's in Harvey's letter, but I want to make sure it's articulated. Nitch represented to Boston Water and Sewer that McPhail Associates did a geotechnical report, and it says, does not anticipate any impacts adjacent properties. McPhail Associates denies he did that. He, he will not take ownership. They were shocked when I met with Nitch and Harry, Harry from McPhail Associates at the property, that the carriage house had a lower level. Because everything worked great if there was no lower level of carriage house, because you had plenty of area for this water to go all over the place. But unfortunately, we have bedrooms at lower level. So, this will flood again. If, if the city sewer surges, it, you know, it's going to happen again, you know, it happens in the city over time. And if, it's a sanitary sewer overflow, that's what it's called, technically called.
So, so, hold on, okay, so, that, that, your last piece of information that you want to put on the record is, summarize one sentence, please.
The, the fact is that Nitch represented to Boston Water and Sewer, this is Nitch, the engineer in direct for the project, that McPhail Associates does not anticipate any impacts adjacent property. McPhail Associates, I talked to him, he denied, he said, I didn't do any reports regarding that stuff. So Boston Water and Sewer approved this thing based on a, you know, false information. And I, I think we have some issues here, because it's the proximity to the property line.
So, so what I'm, what I'm getting is that we have two, two groundwater technicians who have looked at this. We have Water and Sewer who's approved it. We have groundwater trust, who, who concurs that all the above works. And then, and then we have an engineer who, who, who is, who is in opposition, in their opinion, to, to the other two groundwater engineers, okay? So, thank you. So I think, just like a regular hearing, we've heard the proponent on the, on the property, we've heard the abutist concerns, and I think now it's time for us to make a decision.
Can we-
Or time for the board to, no, all done. All done. May I have a motion, please?
I would make a motion that the court's decision to approve the groundwater recharge system was correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is now adjourned.
What about Sanford?
I'm sorry?
What about Sanford, that we?
Denied without prejudice, they were no show. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.